Good morning and thank you for joining today's hearing of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. Today's hearing is about infrastructure that saves lives. Last year, traffic violence killed 255 people in New York City. Sixteen of them were children. This is unacceptable. It is the city's duty to ensure that no family endures the loss of a loved one because our streets are not designed to be safe. Every day, millions of New Yorkers walk, bike, drive, or otherwise use our roads to get to where they need to go. They should not have to fear for their lives when they do so. Improvement in our street infrastructure will help us make this vision a reality. Over the past several years, the Council has passed landmark legislation to add the necessary infrastructure to make our streets safer. It has allocated more than $900 million to the Department of Transportation for that very purpose. Today's hearing is a chance to hear from the Department of Transportation about how it is using that money and how it is implementing the Council's programs. It is also an opportunity to learn from advocates how the city has fallen short and what more can be done. There is no question that the city has made progress on issues of street safety and traffic violence since launching the Vision Zero initiative almost a decade ago. Vision Zero is based on a simple premise: nobody should be seriously injured or killed on our roads. This initiative recognizes the essential role the city can play in preventing traffic violence by engineering streets and making policy to encourage safer road use. Since 2014, the Department of Transportation and the Council have collaborated to expand enforcement against dangerous movement violations, create new street designs and configurations, lower citywide speed limits, and adopt a comprehensive street plan. In the first few years after Vision Zero began, largely as a result of these efforts, we saw progress. In 2018, for example, overall traffic fatalities had dropped to an all-time low of 202. But then this trend reversed. From 2019 to 2021, the city saw increases in the number of traffic fatalities each year. In 2021, 273 people were killed due to traffic violence, a record high since the implementation of Vision Zero. We hope 2022 marks a turning point. The number of traffic fatalities dropped for the first time in three years, declining nearly 7% from 2021. But one life lost is one life lost to many. A record number of children were killed last year by traffic violence. We need to do more to protect New Yorkers. We need to do more to protect our kids. We also need to do more to ensure we make equitable investments that we build and upgrade street infrastructure in neighborhoods that have been long neglected by the city. For example, in city council districts where the majority of residents are Black, the rate of traffic fatalities is 16% higher than the citywide average. These communities deserve better, and I hope to learn more today about how the city is working to prioritize equity as it seeks to improve road infrastructure. To discuss the administration's efforts to address traffic violence, we are joined today by Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, Edana Rodriguez. I plan to question the administration about their approach to street safety infrastructure and what they have accomplished over this past year. Among other things I am eager to discuss: the work DOT is doing around intersection improvements, its implementation of the Streets Plan, including reported noncompliance with the Streets Plan, the resources that DOT will need from us at the Council to accomplish the true goal of Vision Zero, which is zero fatalities, how the city is working with the state to ensure reckless drivers are being held accountable, what DOT is doing to expand protected bike lanes, and how DOT's expansion of the school zone speed camera enforcement programs are going. In addition to the oversight portion of today's hearing, we are hearing several bills that seek to improve the city's street safety infrastructure. Intro Number 369, sponsored by Councilmember Velazquez, would require the Department of Transportation to install reflective material, defined as material that is capable of reflecting light and that is in compliance with the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and the New York Supplement to the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices on bollards, curbs, posts, and roundabouts. DOT would be required to annually install the material on at least 250 bollards, curbs, posts, and roundabouts in each borough. Intro Number 415, sponsored by Councilmember Powers, would require DOT in collaboration with the Police Department and other appropriate agencies to conduct an annual study of driving behavior to determine what behaviors are associated with traffic crashes, injuries, and fatalities. Intro Number 555, sponsored by Councilmember Rivera, would require the DOT to paint school safety signs and install overhead school safety signs on each street where a school entrance is located to alert drivers to the presence of school-aged children and pedestrians. Intro Number 679, sponsored by Councilmember Joseph, would require the Department of Transportation to annually install at least one traffic calming device on no less than 50 blocks that are adjacent to senior centers or naturally occurring retirement communities. Intro Number 805, sponsored by the Public Advocate, would require the DOT to accelerate the schedule on which the agency conducts the study of traffic crashes involving a pedestrian, fatality, or serious injury required by local law from every five years to every three years. Intro Number 854, for which I am the prime sponsor, would require the Department of Transportation implement daylighting or install daylighting features at a minimum of 100 intersections a year, and must implement daylighting at high-priority intersections, those with a significantly larger number of serious vehicular crashes whenever feasible. Intro Number 879, for which I also am the prime sponsor, would require the Department of Transportation to install bollards where necessary throughout New York City, at sidewalks, curb extensions, and pedestrian ramps being reconstructed to make them accessible for pedestrians with a disability. Finally, proposed Resolution Number 441A, sponsored by Councilmember Farias, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Assembly Bill 1416 and the company Senate Bill 315, which would authorize New York City to set a 5 mile per hour speed limit on streets participating in the Open Streets Program. We will now hear from several of the sponsors regarding their bills, beginning with the public advocate on Intro 805.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jermani Williams, Public Advocate of the City of New York. And this time last year, my baby daughter was born two months early, immediately in the NICU. She's one today. We plan to take the-- thank you-- plan to take the day off. She's playing hooky from daycare. I was going to take a day off, but we decided to come because this is such an important issue. Didn't want to miss it. I want to thank Chair Brooks-Powers for her leadership and for holding this hearing, and of course, the same to the members of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure for holding the hearing. Before I begin, I think it would be remiss if we did not acknowledge what occurred in Bay Ridge yesterday. A tuck driver endangered and took the life of one person and injured numerous civilians, most of whom were pedestrians. We hope for the speedy recovery and continue to pray for the family of the victim that was lost. Unfortunately, while yesterday had some unique circumstances, it is a part of a greater problem that our city bears witness to. For years, traffic violence has been dubbed a silent epidemic. In 2022, 255 people, as was mentioned, died from traffic crashes, and our city has not seen this figure go below 200 for years. Even with the launch of Vision Zero, the lowest number of fatalities since the inception of the program was 208 people in 2018. Every person who is a part of these numbers should be alive today. In particular, I think about the children we have lost and how their young lives were regrettably cut short by something so preventable. Our children, all New Yorkers, deserve to walk their streets, ride their bicycles, and be on the road safely and out of harm's way. We cannot become desensitized to these numbers. Every traffic death is preventable. That's what makes it so much more painful if we make improvements and change the street infrastructure and pedestrian safety. Today, the committee will hear several bills. One of them, Introduction 0805, which is my bill, would require the Department of Transportation to expedite studies of traffic crashes involving pedestrian fatalities or serious injuries from every five years to every three years. DOT will now analyze the conditions and factors behind crashes and develop strategies to improve pedestrian safety. Strategies may include installation of audible pedestrian signals and devices to support those with sight, hearing, and mobility impairments, and prioritizing roadways and intersections for safety improvements. The bill would also require DOT to make publicly available inspection reports of locations that have encountered four or more crashes involving death or serious injury. These changes will be a starting point for greater transparency and collaboration. Furthermore, we should increase investment and focus on communities that face the most traffic fatalities and lack of street safety investment. According to Transportation Alternatives in 2022, as we heard some data, the top 10 city council districts with the most traffic fatalities house a third of Black New Yorkers. That is simply unacceptable. In the top 10 districts with the most traffic injuries, 87% of residents were residents of more color. To meet the moment in our current street safety landscape, we must invest in our low-income, working-class communities and communities of more color for our collective safety. We can envision a city free of traffic violence. It is possible. I urge my colleagues in the City Council to join me in sponsoring Intro 805. We all deserve to feel safe and know that leaving our homes and simply crossing the street does not run the risk of injury or fatality. That should be the bare minimum expectation, and I'll continue to fight to ensure we make this a reality. As a driver, I know that our society is too focused on infrastructure for the vehicle and the driver, who is the most privileged on the road, even as we oppose the most danger that has to begin to change. I want to thank the families who are here, but I want to give a specific shout-out to my staff member who's here in her time, Fablio Mendieta, who lost her own son and has turned that into amazing purpose. So I want to say thank you to you for all you do in making sure our office stays as an ally in helping with this issue. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and I'd like to just add that we are joined by Councilmembers Lee, Juan, Narcisse, Lewis, Jaeger, Williams, and Kagan. And a little annuition to our committee. She's an honorary member. We turn now to testimony. I look forward to hearing from the city administration, advocates, and members of the public regarding the oversight and legislation at this hearing. I want to thank my staff and committee staff as well for their hard work. Samuel Brightbart, Council to the Committee; Kevi Kautowski, Senior Policy Analyst; John Basile, Finance Analyst; Jorge Muniz Reyes, Communications; Jack Segenthaler, my Policy and Budget Director; and Renee Taylor, my Chief of Staff. Before we begin, I think it is important that we set the table by hearing from those who have been directly impacted by traffic violence, the family members of those who have lost loved ones. I'd like to invite several individuals to the panel who have volunteered to share their stories. Ms. Priscilla Afakoba, the mother of 10-year-old Davina Afakoba, who we lost one year ago in my district. This particular crash hit me extremely hard, and I remain committed to getting justice in the memory of Davina. I also want to welcome from Families for Safe Streets Amy Cohen, who lost her son, and Monique Williams, who lost her father. And we know that Amy Cohen is on Zoom. We will start with you, Ms. Afakoba, first, so whenever you're ready. Just make sure you turn on the microphone. And while we're waiting, we've just been joined by Councilmember Ariola.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Priscilia Afakoba, mother to Davina Afakoba. My 10-years-old daughter was killed in an accident in Far Rockaway. I stand here today to talk about something that is of great importance to each and every one of us, which is on street safety. My daughter Davina was such a brilliant child, full of energy. She was adorable. She had so much potential. She had so much things that she wanted to achieve in life. She comes to tell me, "Mommy, I want to be a medical doctor. I want to save life." But rather, they took her life, and this is something that would have been averted. I'm a mother, and I speak from the experience of losing my 10-years-old daughter in a tragic accident that happened in Far Rockaway. It was a horrifying experience that left my family and I with a gaping hole in our lives that can never be filled. The cause of the accident was a learner driver that ran across two lanes, crushing my daughter, who was on the sidewalk, walking home from school with her siblings. The learner driver ran across the road, crushing her into an abandoned building. And this is something that would have been averted if safety rules are put in place. Like, on the location where the incident happened, if she made a right turn rather than a left turn, going against the traffic, maybe this would have been averted. And if some of the signs, you know, like the stop sign, is placed on busy places, like where the incident happened, I believe this would have been averted also. And another thing, if there was a speed bump, probably to reduce the speed, which she was coming out from the parking lot. She was not on the street. She was coming out from a parking lot, as a learner driver. With the speed, she ran across the road to pick a little child, who was walking innocently, back from school. Davina never knew, neither did I know that this would happen. The accident, the cause of the accident is something that would have been averted. The loss of a child is something that no parent should ever have to go through. It is an experience that leaves lives that leave one with a permanent sense of emptiness, a feeling that something is missing in our lives, which can never be replaced. Sometime, I wish if I could turn the hands of time. I don't know what I would have done better, but I can question God. It is an experience that nobody would have ever wished on their worst enemy, and that is why I'm here, to talk about the importance of street safety. The agony and suffering that my children and I have gone through and we are still going through is immeasurable, and the thought of my daughter being taken away from us and never to see her again is simply unbearable, and this has left my children traumatized and has been. It has impacted on their lives. Like, sometimes, my son, who is 15 years-- that's my first child, Daniel, since the incident, it's been a year, three days ago or about four days ago, maybe it's a year when the incident happened, and we had the memorial in Far Rockaway. But he keep asking me, "Mom, at what age should I start driving? Should I, you know, get my driver's license?" I say, "I think maybe when you're 18, when you're 17, 18." And he says to me, "So, when I start driving, or when I start learning how to drive, and God forbid, I hit someone and the person die, so nothing will be done?" And I don't have an answer to that, because her own sister, nothing was done. There's no law regarding that. It's just empty. So he asks me, "Is negligence permitted in law?" I'm not a lawyer, so I couldn't even answer that still. And then my daughter, Divine, who is like a twin to Davina, they do everything together. Davina was such an eject-- she liked dancing, she liked cooking at a ten. She practically could do a lot of things: drawing, reading. She just loved to do things. Divine asks me, "Mommy, I don't think I can ever-- I don't think I will ever want to drive," and I don't even know how to talk them out from that. Sometimes I wonder, is it because she-- they ask when we sit down to have a family discussion weekends, on Sundays, basically, when we have family time, like with inter-rat, and they say so. Nothing has been done about Davina's case. On daily basis, they ask me that. Did the driver ever have-- is she not supposed to have a licensed driver beside her? I say, "Yes, she's supposed to." And then they ask, "So she never had one, so what has been done?" I still cannot answer the question. But what is even more heartbreaking is the fact that the driver who caused the accident has not even shown us-- shown any form of remorse, nor offered condolence to us, even though we attend the same church. This demonstrates a Carlos disregard for human life and highlights the need for more penalties for traffic violence-- violations, sorry. We have all heard the phrase, "Accidents happen." But the truth is, accidents can be prevented if we all take responsibilities for our action. It's time we realize that our actions affect not just us, but everyone around us. We must pay attention to our surroundings, follow traffic rules, and be mindful of others around us. We need to emphasize more importance. We must not take the lives of others into our hands. We need to invest in infrastructures that prioritizes pedestrian and bicycle safety, such as bikes and traffic calming measures. We also need to raise awareness about street safety, especially among children. Parents, teachers, and community leaders all have roles to play in educating our youth about the dangers of the road. We need to teach them to be conscious, to follow rules, and to speak up if they see something unsafe. The tragic death of my daughter Davina could have been avoided if the learner had taken her driving classes more seriously and paid attention to her surroundings and followed the traffic rules. It is up to each of us to do our part in ensuring that such incidents do not occur. Street safety is not just about following traffic rules, but it's also about being aware of our surroundings. It's about being alert and paying attention to what's happening around us. It's about looking both ways before crossing the street, staying on the sidewalk while walking, and also wearing helmets while riding bicycles, ensuring the seatbelt is always fastened while in a car, and staying visible in low-light condition. Davina's death is a reminder that we must take street safety seriously. We must never forget the importance of street safety and the devastating consequence that can result from not following the rules. It is our duty to ensure that our family, communities, and streets are safe. I will conclude by saying, street safety is not an option. It is not an option. It is a necessity. We can't afford to be complicit when it comes to our safety and that of our loved ones. We must work together to create a safer world for ourselves and our children. I believe if we all make a conscious effort to follow the rules and stay alert, we can prevent accidents like the one that took the life of my daughter. In New York, for instance, I see this city as a place where everyone is in a hurry. It's as if we don't value lives. I drive each day, and I see the way people, you know, the speed and everything, the way people cutting, and I wonder if they even think about life itself, like, I don't know. So I hope my story has inspired you to take safe street safety seriously, and I hope you will join me in making our communities and roads safer for everyone. And I also want to use this medium to beg and plead with all necessary bodies, with all the, I don't know, the people concerned, to-- they could put in laws that would guide drivers, people driving on the road. Because if they know that there are some form of penalties out there, I think they will be more conscious. Like, what happened to Davina was just an example of this, and nothing was done. The lady that killed my daughter, she moves on like life goes-- moves on. Maybe she killed a piece of furniture and/or something else, and moves on with life. Up till this day, it's a year. I never saw the lady that killed my daughter. I never even-- I didn't-- I don't know how she looks like, and the reason behind this, there was no report, official report, given to my family concerning the incident. Everyone moved on like nothing ever happened. Why my baby Davina? It's gone. Thank you for listening to me. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Afakoba, and yes, Davina's story has inspired us to act on this. This is the very site that Commissioner Rodriguez and I visited days after this tragedy last year, and we thank you for your strength for being here today.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll hear from Amy Cohen online.
Thank you. My name is Amy Cohen, and I am the co-founder of Families for Safe Streets. It's an honor to be here today and to speak at the start of this very important hearing, and I'm really touched that you're letting me do it virtually. I'm so sorry, I'm out of town. I'm grateful to you, Transportation and Chair, for holding this hearing and for introducing two critical bills personally. I also want to thank Public Advocate Jermani Williams for his leadership on street safety in producing the bill on pedestrian safety-- I also want to thank public advocate Jomani Williams for his leadership on street safety and producing the bill on pedestrian safety reporting. Nine years ago, my twelve-year-old son Sammy was killed by a reckless driver in front of our home. I never thought I would be testifying in front of the city council, speaking with the media, or helping lead this movement of grief-stricken family members to demand change. Yet somehow I continue to do so because I can't bear to watch more people like Priscilla lose family members and join this horrible club. Even nine years later, the grief of losing your child in such a senseless, preventable way is indescribable. I loved being Sammy's mom. It was the best job I ever had. He was incredibly bright, compassionate, and loving. New York City's failure to keep our children safe robbed him of a chance to grow up. But it also robbed me of a chance to watch him blossom into the incredible young man he would be today. I miss him every day. And on days like today, Valentine's Day, the pain is even more pronounced. So I want to thank the council and all the bill sponsors for the bills under consideration today. All eight bills are a step forward, but the truth is, they don't go nearly far enough. Yes, we need safety signs, daylighting, slower speed limits on our open streets, and studies. But we desperately need bold action. We need rapid implementation of the proven traffic calming and design changes needed to ensure that every street across the city is safe to navigate for our children, our seniors, and all New Yorkers. The biggest challenge we face to achieving Vision Zero is that these critical lifesaving design changes are not being implemented quickly enough. We need the city council to pressure DOT to move more rapidly, adhere to its commitments with the NYC Streets Plan, and prioritize the rollout of safe street measures on every dangerous street and intersection. Moreover, we need every council member to champion these proven safety measures and not be impediments to change when a small group of residents think their parking space is more critical than the life of the residents in their district. I am also counting on the city council to support Sammy's Law in the New York State Legislature this session. In addition to REZA 441, the council must also pass a Home Rule Resolution in support of this bill named after my son, which would allow New York City to control its own speed limits and lower limits in places where DOT finds it necessary. This would also allow lower speed limits on open streets as proposed in REZA 441. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for allowing us to remind everyone why this work is so important. This is not about just numbers or abstract ideas. Lives are at stake, and people are counting on you to protect their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Next, we'll hear from Monique Williams.
Thank you, Transportation Chair Brooks Powers, and speakers, the entire Transportation Committee, for convening this hearing, and to the New York City Department of Transportation for being here. Again, my name is Monique Williams, and I am a member of Families for Safe Streets, a group which should not exist. Two years ago, my father, Jerry Spriggs, was killed by a driver in a hit-and-run crash in the Bronx. My father was truly a kind and thoughtful person, who still should be here. But he's gone, and he's truly missed, and he's truly loved. He enjoyed painting, he enjoyed biking, he enjoyed chess, you know? He just enjoyed being around his family. And I'm proud to call him my dad. My dad, he did have a hard life, but he was never disrespectful to anyone, and he was always helpful. And he raised two wonderful daughters, and he has five grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. And we miss him. My granddaughter was born a month, basically a month after he was killed. And so I just want to say that we really need to invest in safe streets, invest in the Safe Streets Master Plan that was enacted in 2021. Among the other things, the street plan mandates that thirty miles of protected bike lanes and twenty miles of bus lanes are constructed every year. Things that we know calm traffic down, encourage people to drive more carefully. It makes it possible for people to safely commute and reduce crashes, senseless crashes, and it saves lives. My dad, at seventy-one years old, was still strong and capable of doing so much. And, you know, my dad died November 12, 2020. He died a week before my sister's birthday and two weeks before my birthday. And it was just a crushing experience for us. Unexpected, and during it, because it was COVID, it was hard to get information regarding his whereabouts. I actually learned about his death on the news, and then received a phone call asking, well, I received a phone call from my aunt, but she received a phone call from a donors organization asking for his body parts. And we basically found out that his body was in Lincoln Hospital. But they gave us to run around in order to see him, you know? And it was, it was crushing. It was crushing to hear. But we need not to have these deaths occur any longer. We are advocating for safe streets. We need our city leaders to exercise the powers that they have to be implemented and for safe redesign of our streets, and to invest in the projects that they have throughout the boroughs. Because every year, the city fails to implement illegally mandated number of safe street projects is another year that New Yorkers lose their lives, like my dad. Everyone has a right to go to their destinations, get to their destination safely, whether they are walking, riding their bikes, they're on their scooters, walking with their children, children coming from school, children going to school, even driving in a passenger in a car. We need to get to our destination safely. And we know it can be done, and we know streets can be made safer. So we're asking you to implement safe streets in the bills. And please, Amy's testimony, please read it through, list every bill that we're requesting to be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Stevens, Brewer, and Wrestler. Now I will pass it to our committee counsel to swear in the witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
And Councilmember Harrieth.
Thank you both so much. I'm Sam Brightbart, counsel to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the New York City Council. Our next witnesses will be from the Department of Transportation, Commissioner Adonis Rodriguez, and I will also call up DOT Deputy Commissioner Eric Beaton, Assistant Commissioner Rick Rodriguez, NYPD Deputy Chief Pellic, and Michael Clark from the NYPD. And I know we have one more person from DOT. Sorry, can you say your name one more time?
Julia Kaitley Law, Director of Safety Policy.
Great, thank you. And we'll now administer the oath. So please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee? And to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you, you may begin one ready.
Good morning, Chair Powers and members of the committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. First of all, happy Valentine to everyone. And we know that, you know, this conversation that we are having today definitely is a big challenge that we have in front of us. But as we have heard the story of the mother of Divina to work so hard to be sure that, you know, she turned the pain that she going through, nothing will bring back her child, but you know, for the other generation of Jomani Chow, Amani, my daughters, Isla, and Yariza, for all the children, or the future generation, we had to continue working so hard to improve safety in our street. Mayor Adams say very clear, traffic violence is another type of violence that is in our control, and we can eliminate it. I'm Adonis Rodriguez, Commissioner of the New York City Departments of Transportation. After two years of being a council member, always members of this committee, in the last eight years, I used to be the chairman of this committee. We meet today Eric Beaton, Deputy Commissioner for Transportation Planning and Management, Rick Rodriguez, Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, and Julia Kaitley Law, Director of Safety Policy. We are also joined by Deputy Chief Michael Pilek and Director Michael Clark from the New York City Police Department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Mayor Eric Adams on a street safety infrastructure in Vision Zero at large. I first want to acknowledge the horrific crash that happened in Bay Ridge yesterday. Our deepest condolences are with the family and friends of the person who was killed, and our thoughts are with those who were injured. We wish them a full and speedy recovery. We will assist NYPD with the investigation in any way we can. Now, I want to turn to the positive trends from last year, and I want everyone to have this in mind. Even with all these challenges that we have in front of us, New York City is the safest city in the United States of America when it came to pedestrians and cyclists. That's what the data showing. Mayor Adams is very clear, and us too, one death is too many. But still, we also have to look at all the work that we are doing. I want to turn to the positive trends in 2022, where fatalities in New York City dropped for the first time since 2018, and pedestrian deaths were near record low. New York City is defining the national trends for pedestrians deaths, which are at a four-decade high across the state. We are also defining the pattern for the rest of New York State. These local trends are encouraging and show that the steps we are taking as a city to make our streets safer are working. This include our work to improve intersections citywide. In January 2022, the Mayor Adams and I announced that the city will improve 1,000 intersections, which we assisted by completing over 1,600 intersection improvements through different treatments. This include installing turncoming treatments at over 220 intersections, installing always stop signs at over 420 intersections, the most ever in a single year that has been made in our city. Installing a record number of race crosswalks, daylighting over 100 intersection with bike corals, and installing over 600 leading pedestrian intervals to give pedestrians and cyclists a head start at intersections. In 2022, DOT completed over 26 new protected bike lanes miles and reached 1,500 bike lanes mile citywide. We need more support from the council to get more protected bike lane and also to get more bike lane. We also hardened 10 miles of previously delineated protected bike lanes, and will harden another 10 miles this year. This will keep us on track to harden half of the city delineated protected bike lanes by the end of 2023. DOT also completed 111 street improvement projects in 2022. Some highlighting include protected bike lane and pedestrian safety enhancement on White Plains Road from 214 to 226th Street in the Bronx, sidewalk extensions on Eighth, Ninth, and Lexington Avenue in Manhattan, protected bike lanes on Skimmer Home Street in Brooklyn, intersection upgrades at Home Long Street and Grand Central Parkway in Queens, and a race crosswalk at the LaFille Avenue and Manor Road in Stiting Island. We also secure another win for safety. We succeeded in securing authority from the state to expand the speed camera enforcement program to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The expansion more than double the hours of operation, which were limited from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays since the launch of 24 Operational August 1, 2022. And this is important for all of us to get this data as we move forward on expanding and fighting for more another law at the state. DOT have experienced a 25% reduction in violation with month-over-month declines. That's how getting the speed camera 24 hours help New York City to save more lives. While we are encouraged by last year trends, as Mayor Adams has made clear, the only acceptable number of traffic fatalities is zero. The safety of all New Yorkers remains DOT's number one priority, and we are committed to doing more. And I know that the council is a great partnership for us to accomplish that goal. New York City is doing this by adopting the safe system approach. The goal is to build and reinforce multiple layers of protection to both, prevent crashes from happening, and minimize the harm caused to those involved on those crashes. Redundancy is key. If one part of the system fails, the other parts still protect people. This approach focused on five complementary objectives. Safer people, safer roads, safer vehicles, safer speed, and post-crash care. All five elements are essential for achieving Vision Zero. Vision Zero is about combining engineering, educational, and enforcement. First, safer vehicles. Vehicles are largely regulated by other levels of government. New York City DOT has succeeded in advocating for seatbelt law at the state level and local law to require safeguard on the city fleet and city contracted vehicle, one of which I was proud to be a sponsor to many, it's called Prime, together with many other colleagues that we served together previously. For safer speeds, DOT has expanded our speed camera program and also installed the sweet treatments to encourage slower speeds. and also installed the street treatments to encourage slower speeds. 25 miles per hour is the speed limit. Everyone should respect it. And when anyone drive at 25, they have more visibility and they can protect pedestrians, cyclists, and even protect themselves. Regarding post-crash care, our agency partners FDNY and NYPD work to respond quickly when a crash does occur. And DOT's Emergency Response Unit visits fatal crash site to ensure any infrastructure in need or repair is fixed promptly. For safer roads, DOT is committed to making streets safer. And this is the focus of so much work that we do. Last week, I was happy to join Senator Gillibrand and other members of the congressional delegation, such as Nidia Velasquez, Councilmember Rivera, and others in celebrating the over 20 million saved streets for all grants we were just aware. This funding will go toward safety enhancement on the Lancy Street and the development of a new pedestrians model and macro mobility planning tool. This morning, we released our, sorry here, we release. This morning, we released our updated Vision Zero Borough Pedestrian Safety Plans, which is a public document. These plans show us where our safety intervention will have the greatest effect and help us determine where to implement projects. The plans identify priority corridors and priority intersections based on location where most pedestrians will kill or severely injured using multiple years of data. With the first plans published in 2015 and updated in 2019, the 2023 plan identify priority corridors and intersections based on the last five years of available data, 2017 through 2021. We will use these new priority corridors and intersections to guide our work over the coming years. And also this morning, DOT released the 2023 Plan Updated. Also, it's another public document that we have. We are fully committed to the street plan and are working creatively with available resources to deliver high-quality, high-impact projects. In 2022, DOT met several street plan benchmark with record-setting numbers in our city. We implemented transit signal priority at a record 781 intersections to reduce the time buses spend stuck at red lights. And we installed accessible pedestrian signals at a record 492 intersections citywide. We also improved the lives of 400,000 daily bus riders with project that have made bus services faster and more reliable. And when we get more support, we even can expand those numbers of bus lane that we can do in our city. I want to stress that the effect this project have on the life of New Yorkers is more meaningful than a particular mileage number. A project that is small in mileage can still improve New Yorkers' lives significantly. One great sample is our work with MTA at Pearl Bay Park Station in the Bronx. Their 1/10 mile of bus lanes will save 2 and 1/2 minute per trip for thousands of daily bus riders and make it more comfortable and seamless connection to the subway, but does little to achieve our overall mileage goals. This street plan, local law, this is a street plan that I was also a co-prime of this local law, set ambitious and laudable target that we will always strive for. While the agency continued to be adequately funded in the Adams administration, we continue to experience challenges with agency capacity that have affect our input. And by the way, this is not only this agency and this is not only the city. This is a national challenges that we are facing across the United States when it came to the challenges to hire our staffs. We also believe that qualified public engagement is central to an equitable process. And we are taking time to make sure we have robust engagement with communities. That's why yesterday I spent my whole day in Stiting Island, starting with the Borough President, Councilmember, ending meeting with all the interfaith community. And as I did also in Queens, I'm going to be going doing my commission in Borough, when I'm going every month to meet with all the stakeholders and all the electoral officials to hear from them, whether they need or not to support anything related to transportation. Something little can have a big impact. I did a walk with Councilmember Cagan in his district. And he highlighted to my attention that there was a need to have a stop sign that they've been asking for years and years. We got it done and I know how important was for him and for all the senior citizen community in his district. That's why we're working at DOT. We have also launched programs like Open Streets and Open Restaurants that were not envisioned at the time the street plan legislation was passed, but that are still critical to today's New York. We don't measure our plan based on those big ambition. We have 2,000 open restaurants that save 100,000 jobs, but we are not again including the program Open Restaurant and Open Street as we look at this program. The program, the street plan. This means DOT staff are doing more than ever to expand public space for New Yorkers while also trying to meet goals that were set before the pandemic and before we were getting into those other programs. While we are excited to be expanding our operations, like with many sectors of the economic and municipal governments across the country, DOT is facing hiring challenges in the post-pandemic environments. We currently have, is someone there? You good? Sure. Okay. Oh, what's going there? Again, DOT is facing hiring challenges in the post-pandemic environment. We currently have 4% fewer staff than we did in 2019 and 14.3% fewer staff in the Transportation Planning and Management Division, which is tasked with most of this work. We recently held a JAFIR for current engineer college student. And we plan to make condition offers to those and of those candidates offered pending their graduation this spring. We also partnered with DC 37, another JAFIR that did this past weekend, where hundreds of candidates, they went there. And I know that our HR is also in conversation to also hire from those who apply through the DC 37 JAFIR in Manhattan. We are actively working to bring on new facility space to be able to hire addition in house implementation crews. For example, a new yard we allow us to bring an additional concrete crews this year. And we are working with our staff and contractors to maximize efficiency. I want to thank all the employee of DOT, all the men and women for their commitment and dedication to getting the work done despite these challenges. They run the largest transportation system in the whole country, one that have been doing so many great job. But still, there's a lot more work that we have to do. We also think that the better measure of our work is the real effect on the street. Our streets are getting safer. More New Yorkers are cycling. Buses are moving faster in bus lanes and busway. And we have created wonderful public space in all parts of the city. The final piece of the safe system approach is safer people. And we continue to work with our agency partners to create safer people through education and as well as enforcement. And when I was there serving together with Gerbroun, Jomani, William, and many others, the council started baselining a million dollars to DOT for the Vision Zero education awareness. Before I left, together with the chair and other, we increased that baseline to $5 million. So the council working with DOT put those funding so that we can invest on the Vision Zero educational awareness. DOT has a dedicated safety educational and outreach team who conduct pedestrian, cyclists, drivers, and child passenger workshop for all New Yorkers throughout the city. This team work with over 600 schools and 200 other adult centers each year. In addition, DOT takes the lead in communication with drivers around the most serious causes of crashes. The Vision Zero Street Team Program operate in high-crash areas with DOT NYPD representatives talking with New Yorkers in the community with on the street education. DOT also teach Alive at 25, a program at high school to teach young adults to be safer drivers and better passenger if they are in a vehicle with someone who is driving recklessly. DOT also hold Stop DWI event and oversee the classes for the Dangerous Vehicle Abagments Program, educating drivers who have received over five red lights or 15 speed camera tickets in 12 months. The safety educational team also distributes over 20,000 helmets each year, which we are able to, which we are able to do thanks to the funding that the city council, through each council member, put the money for us to accomplish those number. We work directly with the council member delivering those helmets to the cyclists in their district. And is available to properly install car seat for New Yorkers who drive. This comprehensive work is conducted in every neighborhood with the focus on our most vulnerable New Yorkers in the highly-crash areas. Crash data shows why safer people is so important. Since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, the number of proportion of fatal crashes involving drivers who have been driving reckless or on a suspended license has increased nationwide, including in our city. In response, and as Mayor Adams has announced in his past State of the City address, we are calling on our colleagues in Albany to pass the ROBS legislative package, which stands for Removing Offenders and Aggressive Drivers From Our Streets. These bills aim to increase accountability among dangerous drivers and keep those with a history of dangerous driving behavior of our streets. This package includes bills to lower the blow alcohol concentration threshold for driving while intoxicating from 0.8 to 0.5. Year after year, about 30% of fatal crashes in New York State involve drunk drivers. New York has the opportunity to be a national leaders in this change that will save lives. If we pass this bill and we are doing the whole nation, we can reduce 10% of individuals who lost their life because of crashes. Suspend the legislation of a vehicle that receive five or more red light camera violation within 12 months. Receiving multiple red light camera ticket is associated with higher risk of being involved in a serious crashes. Combat the persistent problem of driving on a suspended or rebooked license due to dangerous driving behaviors, including authorizing a program to impound license plate and bills to strengthen penalty to discuss dangerous driving. Targets penalty for drivers who endure injuries or kill while driving dangerously. Now, turning to the legislation before the council today, we at DOT share your commitment to enhancing safety through a street design and support the spirits of these packets of bill. And we thank you for your partnership. We are actively following the data to determine the location most in need of safety enhancement with the Vision Zero Borough Pedestrian Safety Action Plans I mentioned earlier. We then implement targeted safety treatments that produce the greatest safety benefit at those locations. We also continue to evaluate treatments and grow our toolkit. This approach is proven to work. Traffic fatalities in New York City are 15% lower than the year before Vision Zero began, despite the pandemic era rise in dangerous driving. But let me be clear, one is too many. And I also want for the council to look at 2022 data and just look about in 2022, how we have one of the lowest year when it comes, yes, to look at pedestrian and cyclists. And then to look at the other numbers, more of those reckless drivers driving in the highway, driving in our street that they were speeding. Those numbers were higher. And that's why the overall number looks so bad in 2022. But the redesigning of the street has worked. And pedestrians and cyclists in 22 was one of the lowest year that we have. Because we have a robust toolkit of safe street treatment, we urge the council to allow us to retain flexibility to determine which treatments will be most effective in each location based on our data-driven safety criteria that I share with you, that I proven that is working, and our professional engineering judgments. While we support the intent of these packets of bill, we have concern over the effect of the agency ability to make the appropriate safety changes on our street. Streets are dynamic and conditions are constantly changing. We need to be mindful. And as always, we welcome your partnership in identifying locations of concern and implementing a critical safety project. Turning to Intro 679 sponsored by Councilmember Joseph. This bill would require DOT to install traffic coming device at over 50 blocks next to older adult center or naturally occurring retirement communities, NORC, each year. Last year, DOT released a groundbreaking pedestrian safety, something again being public, everyone has it. We share with the council. And what we have seen is on this study is that this study show how DOT's street redesign have reduced serious crashes for these particularly vulnerable group. When we look at 2022, we have one of the lowest year when it comes to senior citizens losing their life. And again, one is too many. In addition, the study contains a robust and comprehensive action plan, which directs DOT to install safety treatment and street redesigns within the senior pedestrian zone where people over 65 senior and senior pedestrian injuries are concentrated. As I announced in June, DOT is targeting senior pedestrian zones and installing turncoming treatment at 50 intersection annually, new leading pedestrian interval, and much more. We believe the senior pedestrian zone are stronger indicators of safety need compared to the proximity to a senior center of NORC. Therefore, while we support the bill intent to enhance safety for all the New Yorkers, we cannot support this bill as drafted. We would like to work with the council member to ensure we can continue to target our intervention where they would have the greatest safety benefit for others, adults, or New Yorkers. And I had to recognize that Councilmember Joseph have been one of the closer and stronger partner that DOT has when it comes to promote our agenda to improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists. Next, Intro 854 sponsored by Chairbrook Powers. This bill will require DOT to daylight 100 intersection annually. We prioritize giving to high-need intersections. DOT does intensive work each year to enhance safety at intersections. As I mentioned early, in 2022, we did those number. We surpassed our goal of improving 1,000 intersection by improving over 1,600, including daylighting over 100 intersections. Daylighting is an important tool that we use. Daylighting is an important tool that we use in our toolbox, but it is not the right solution everywhere. It also must be implemented with physical infrastructure in the newly opening space to prevent vehicles from turning more quickly. While we support the spirit of this bill to enhance safety, salud, our intersections, we would like to retain flexibility to determine which treatment are the most appropriate in each location and definitely would like to continue having conversation with Chair of Power. Next, Intro 555 sponsored by Councilmember Rivera regarding school safety infrastructure. As a parent, former teacher for 15 years and a co-founder of two schools, I know what it feels like to walk to school each day and think about my daughters and students traveling to and from schools. Suddenly, I'm sorry, student safety is a top priority for me. DOT has a robust school safety program. Through this program, DOT completes comprehensive street redesigns in high-crash areas near school and we even get the student to be involved as we do our planning. You can see the work that we have done in this, in the first chart here. This is Amsterdam 190, the word, the press conference that I hold at the corner in front of Isabella Nursing Home, which is not necessarily in front of GW, but that's where the data showing that most crashes were happening that affect students, senior citizens, everyone. It was a student, or I challenge myself, lesbian Anna, that worked with DOT not only to learn about what they can do to improve safety, but also they share their idea and they work on DOT. They can be future planning of DOT as they will grow up and go to college. Again, DOT has a robust school safety program. Through this program, DOT complete comprehensive street redesign in high crashes. To give an example, Alessandra Avenue in the Bronx is a wild roadway that separate local nature residents from schools on the other side of the street. To enhance safety, DOT install news signalized crossing and painted sidewalk extensions. These changes led to 48% reduction in injury overall and 67% reduction in pedestrian injuries. The data showing that is working. And in Sheppard Bay in Brooklyn, DOT redesigned three miles of parallel roadways in Avenue V, W and X. We added bicycle lanes, concrete pedestrians, islands, medians and new crossing. These changes reduce overall injuries by 14% and pedestrian injuries by 14%. Sorry, I'm sorry, by 43%. Intro 555 will require DOT to paint a sign on a street and install at least one overhead sign on each street where a school is present. While we support the bill intent of enhancing safety near school, we cannot support as it, support as it drafted. Our research show that the specific treatment this bill will require are not necessarily effective at reducing injuries. We look forward to continuing conversation with Councilmember Rivera, who I had the honor of working with for, with for many years and we accomplished a lot of thing when we started together as a council. We strongly support focusing our school safety work on the treatment that have been proven to be the most effective in delivering safer street for students and all road users. And we would be happy to work with your office to discuss effective strategy for any affected location of concern in your district. Next, Intro A79 sponsored by Chair Brook Powers, which will require DOT to conduct a study on the effectiveness of bolters in high pedestrian traffic areas. Establish guidelines, guidelines governing installation and upon determination that installation is necessary, install bolters whenever DOT makes accessibility-related repairs or reconstruct sidewalk, curb extensions or pedestrians ramps. Crashes that keep, that take place on sidewalk are horrific and shocking, but are responsible for a very small percentage of pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries. They are also hard to predict. Moreover, installing security, security bolters is often complicated and extensive, potentially costing millions of dollars at each locations. It may involve moving or accommodating on the ground infrastructure, water, sewer, power and telecommunications, subway tunnels and building vaults. It can also interfere with pedestrian ramps and block curb access for loading and unloading of both good and goods and passengers. Therefore, location must be chosen with care and input from the security expert. As a former chairman of this community who carry a similar bill, I understand and support the intent and of wanting the use of additional tool to keep pedestrians safer. More happy to continue conversation with Chair Brook Powers about the intent of this bill. Next, Intro AO5 sponsored by Public Advocate Williams, which require additional fatal crash data reporting. DOT, DOT currently report on fatal and severe crashes in two main ways, one that is more immediate and another that is longer term. Through the Serious Injury Response Tracking and Analysis or CIRTA program launched in compliance to with Local Law 49 of 2021 that I also was a co-prime, DOT investigate, analyze and report on all serious vehicle crashes from the previous quarter. This new program is more comprehensive than what the bill proposed covering thousands of severe injuries, fatality and fatality locations annually. This include reviewing a street design, infrastructure and driver behavior at each crash location and making recommendations to, for safety maximizing changes to a street design and infrastructure. DOT also published a Vision Zero Borough Pedestrian Safety Action Plans released this morning, which look at multiple years of crash data and help ensure that our street redesign work is protect proactively addressing the most dangerous locations citywide. Transparency is imperative, but we do not support this bill as drafted because we think this existing crash report provides sufficient information. We will be happy to speak with the council further about this report and also provide additional information about any particular location of concern. Next, Intro 415 sponsored by Councilmember Powers, which will require a study of dangerous driving. DOT is currently working on the dangerous driving study required by Local Law 36 of 2020. While our agency will continue to closely track dangerous driving behavior on city street, we recommend that we brief the council and allow you to review the study first before legislating that is be conducted annually in order to determine its utility. Finally, Resolution, Resolution 441 sponsored by Councilmember Farias, one of the favorites one, she brought new energy in her district, more pro cyclists, more pro pedestrian than previous one, which call upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A 10647 sponsored by Assemblymember Epstein and S 9569 sponsored by Senator Salazar. This bill will authorize New York City to set a five mile per hour speed limit on open street. We support this resolution as it will enhance safety on open street, particularly pedestrians and cyclists and ensure street remain space where New Yorkers can gather in a safer, healthy manner. In addition, we also urge the state legislature to passing the governor to sign the SAMI law, which would allow New York City to set the speed limit including as low as five mile per hour on open. Chairman, this is something that I hope that we can definitely work as fast as possible. The governor already committed that she will work onto the SAMI bill, onto the bill that is similar to the SAMI bill on, on her budget April 1st. If we work together, if we get a home room, there's no doubt that that SAMI law will be done very soon and will improve the safety to all New Yorkers. In conclusion, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to testify before you today on issues of such important to this agency, to the council and to this city. Achieving Vision Zero will require that we continue to work together to create safer street and also safer people, safer vehicle, safer speed and safer post-crash care. Our data again, driving approach is working and it's working because it's been the result of all the work that we have done together from the administration and together with the council. Traffic fatalities, traffic fatalities in New York City are 15% lower than the year before Vision Zero began and traffic fatalities dropped in 2022 for the first time since before the pandemic define national trends. This coming year, we look forward to building on this safety game and partnering with you to get our protected in the ground project that will use our broad toolkit to help New Yorkers get where they need to go more quickly and safety. I know that we all share the goals of making our streets safer for pedestrians, cyclists and all road users. And now I welcome any question, but as a Spanish speaking person, I'm going to speak only for one minute in Spanish. Oye damo la gracias a la Chair of Powers, a la leader del Consejo Adams y todos los concejales por permitirnos venir aquí a testificar sobre todo el trabajo que está haciendo DOT para asegurarnos, seguir mejorando las intersecciones, seguir mejorando las calles de Nueva York para que sea más segura para los peatones y para los ciclistas. Junto el Consejo, DOT y toda la ciudad podemos seguir haciendo Nueva York una ciudad que es un modelo de mejorar la seguridad para los peatones y los ciclistas en todo el país.
Thank you, Commissioner. Although it sounds unfortunately like DOT doesn't support any of the bills that we're looking to discuss today. So let's, let's dig in. Traffic violence. For the first time since 2019, the city saw a decline in overall traffic fatalities for the year 2022. Although encouraging, 2022 also marked the deadliest year on record since 2014 for child fatalities due to traffic violence. This is double the number of children killed in 2020 or in 2020, excuse me, 2018. Crashes have killed 94 children since Vision Zero began in 2014. What factors made 2022 the deadliest year since 2014 for child fatalities due to traffic violence? And I'm interested in understanding what DOT is doing to address this concern and trend. And let me color it first. Davina Affacoba passed away on February 10th, 2022. I immediately reached out to the Department of Transportation to ask for infrastructure to be put in place to ensure that this did not happen again. I've also brought you to the site to visit as well and we looked at that corridor. A year and three days later, there is no infrastructure change on that street. We now merely received paint from the Department of Transportation. That's an example that I can speak of firsthand, sitting here as the Majority Whip, as the Chair for the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. That's unacceptable. And so I'd like to know what DOT is doing to address this trend.
So being councilman for 12 years, I know the responsibility that each member has to deliver for their district. And Chairman, as we have done the work in your district, you also know that when we come back, we hear back to you and our staff has shared a lot of improvement that have been done as a result of the work that we have done, seeing many intersection that also we've been redesigning. So yes, we can look at that one and see anything that we can do to improve, but also being fair, I can say not only in your district, but in each council member that I have done the work that their members and the advocate that highlighted to us, any work that must be done, we usually get back, you know, delivering to the council member because it is a commitment of this administration led by Mayor Adams that we build two-way street, that we are there standing with the council member, you know, working with them to be sure that we improve, you know, we make any improvement of the major challenges that you have. But when it comes to the 2022, that question related to the specific, I'm going to be calling on, you know, Bob Eric Betton, who do most of the work on the transportation planning management, he's in charge of that. And then by Julia Kyle, who also oversee those data to also add with more details.
Sure, thank you. And, you know, as the Commissioner said, even one child killed on our street is, is too much and we take this incredibly seriously that we need to address locations where children are getting killed or seriously injured. We've put a tremendous amount of work through our school safety program into looking not just at where fatalities have happened, but where we think that they're likely to happen in the future by looking at crashes and injuries and really trying to look at the types of places where it's likely to happen next time around. And sometimes that's directly in front of a school, sometimes it's a block away. We want to make sure that we're making our interventions at the places where they're most useful. And, you know, obviously we need to do more, we all know that, but we do put a tremendous amount of work, whether it's daylighting, whether it's speed humps, whether it's road diets and protective bike lanes, we concentrate a lot of that work in the neighborhoods around schools so that children have safe routes to school and have ways to get there. So we think that last year was a, you know, really unfortunate to see that increase. We think that that it was a little bit of an anomaly as our child fatality rates have been very low year over year, but it's something we're watching very closely to see if there's a trend, if we need to do more on, on design. We also do a lot of work on education and working with schools to make sure that children know the rules of the road. We work with drivers to make sure that they're aware of schools. You know, it's our highest priority to make sure that we're doing the work to keep these students safe.
Education is important, but when I look to the case of Davina who was walking home from school, she was walking on the sidewalk. She didn't do anything wrong.
That's right.
There was no line in the middle of that street when this accident happened.
Well, if you don't mind, and we can go back to that crash that happened, but if Julia can explain about the data for, for last year 2022 and then of course, we get into the challenger redesigning that particular intersection.
Yes, as we heard from the Commissioner during his testimony, crashes that result in serious injuries or deaths are often multifactorial and that's why the safe system approach comes at street safety from so many different angles. We always say there's no one magic bullet that is going to eliminate road deaths. It's all these things working in conjunction. And for example, when we look at the unfortunate number of deaths of people under 18 last year, we see that, for example, we had a slightly, well, no, a larger than normal number of motor vehicle occupants and that included three teenagers who were killed in a single crash on Staten Island. They were driven by another teenager who was not appropriately licensed. So when cases like this, for example, we see, and also in that crash, there was the involvement of another vehicle driven by a suspended driver. So when we see crashes like this, they're taking multiple lives tragically of people who are very young in just one crash, we realize we do have to come at it at several angles and this is why the legislative package we're advancing in Albany with the backing and the support of Mayor Eric Adams is so crucial because it's showing that not only are we doing all this crucial infrastructure work here at the ground level in New York City, we're also recognizing that there are factors at the state level, even at the federal level, that we also need support on in order to be able to achieve our street safety goals. And we're very optimistic that because this, this is a data-driven package informed by the tragic events of the past several years, that we will be able to move the needle on this issue.
Three of the children were killed walking or biking to or from school. How is DOT working to make sure streets adjacent to schools and parks are safe?
So the data is showing that most of those crashes that involve any fatality So the data is showing that most of those crashes that involve any fatality of the precious life of any children, our students, are not happening in front of the school, that happen in the surrounding area. Last year in 2022, I held a press conference in Amsterdam in 190 and this is one of the typical location. The reason why we decided to redesign that area, which is like three blocks from that school that have four academy inside the GW campus, is because we following the data. So what we are looking is, what we have learned is that most again, the challenge that we have is about the redesigning that we had to do in the area around the school, not necessarily in front of the school. So we are following the data and that's what we are doing so far and the data is proving that with the work that we are doing in, not only in that particular site, but in dozens of other sites that we redesigned around the school, we have seen a reduction of crashes.
In 2021, there were 93 hit and runs with critical injuries, twice as many as compared to 2018. What is DOT doing to ensure that hit and run incidents are reduced? And how is the Department of Transportation ramping up enforcement after these incidents?
Yeah, I gotta say what we're doing in the NYPD, I think that they, and also they're here, they also can add, you know, their experience on how they're working with that. What I can say that, you know, what we saw during COVID and year 21 after COVID was that, you know, the numbers of reckless drivers, you know, speeding and leaving the scene. And as you know, I've been going to the scene because there have been people that they have been the victim of hit and run. The young person Rivera that killed, that was killed in Moschulo Parkway was deep to my heart. I know his family before he was born. So I've been going with, with DJ from La Mega, I also went to Brooklyn. So we've been going after, you know, the epidemic of hit and run. So I know that there's also a need where the, all the DA across the five boroughs, they also been asking for all the strengthening the law at the state levels so that they can be able also to prosecute faster in those cases. We also know also that the consequence of someone who leave the scene, if it's wrong, is sometimes even higher than the hit and run. So there's a lot of work when it comes to have to be done at the state level, but when it comes to enforcement, going after those cases of hit and run, our colleague here from the NYPD, they, they will explain. Chief.
So just give you some quick data first. So far this year as of February 12th, 2023.
Your name?
I'm Chief Pulecki. Leaving the scene, physical injury cases, year to date, we are 885 versus 868. So we're up 2%. Property damage cases, we're down 21%, 3100 versus 4,000. In the prior year, we were up 2% in physical injury cases, 8,894 versus 8,873. So what do we do about this? Well, there's a variety of things that we do. Everything pretty much with regard to Vision Zero is coordinated through our traffic safety forums, which are weekly meetings, very similar to the ComStat meetings that the department holds to reduce crime. Similarly, each week, the Chief of Transportation pulls down the executive staff of a particular patrol borough, all the captains of those precincts, the executive officers are all responsible for implementation of their traffic safety plan, and that's where they're held accountable before the Chief of Transportation. She stresses leaving the scene and follow-up on leaving the scene cases. She actually goes through each individual case with each precinct that's making a presentation to ensure the detectives are following up to apprehend any, you know, outstanding perpetrators. In addition to that, we focus on covered license plates. There's a concern is people with covered license plates, you can't, you can't apprehend them, paper plates as well. So we do a lot of enforcement with regard to paper plates, we do a lot of enforcement with regard to covered plates, again, to address the whole issue of leaving the scene
What more can the city be doing to prevent hit and runs from occurring in the first place?
Think when you, do you want to? So, you know, if, if you look to bring down collisions overall, you would certainly decrease the likelihood of hit and run collisions. So we strive to break, to bring down collisions overall. So for example, again, so far this year, we're down 15% in collisions overall. We're 9,470 versus 11,164. The prior year, 2022 versus 2021, we're down in collisions overall again, 102,356 versus 109,526. So the whole thought is that if you bring the collisions down overall, you're going to reduce the likelihood of leaving the scene collision. We think that certainly through monitors, video cameras throughout the city, that's always helpful in tracking down the people who are responsible. And we ensure that through our traffic safety forum, I can say that we focus very, very much on bringing these people to justice. It's an issue that's discussed every single Thursday at our weekly meetings and all of our precinct executive officers are held accountable to ensure that the cases are moving forward and properly investigated.
Well, what can we do to, to, sorry, sorry. You were saying?
Oh, yes, I, I also wanted to mention again that when I talked about state legislation, the bill that we're, that we are supporting to lower the blood alcohol threshold for DWI actually could have quite a beneficial effect on reducing hit and runs. While we don't have exact numbers, of course, because people have left the scene, we do know that many hit and run crashes, the reason the person is leaving the scene is because they are intoxicated and they know it and they know there will be a penalty for it. In other places that have lowered their blood alcohol threshold for DWI in a similar way, they've seen reductions in drunk driving, not only at that lower level of intoxication, but also at very, very high levels like point two, point 18, at levels that are more likely to result in a crash. They've seen that just the way that the law is passed and the way the law is socialized and the law is enforced, it brings down drunk driving at all those different levels. So if we can bring down drunk driving that way, which the data is showing is, is very, there's a very robust body of evidence for that, we think it would have a beneficial knock-on effect of also bringing down our hit and runs.
Thank you. 97% of pedestrians killed have been struck by drivers of vehicles. DOT committed to add exclusive pedestrian crossing time to all feasible new priority intersections by the end of 2019. What is the status of this effort?
Yes, that, that's right, and we have been adding exclusive pedestrian time, either through full exclusive pedestrian phases or leading pedestrian intervals. We did do that at all of our previously identified priority locations, but one of the, the things that we're doing in identifying the new geographies is pointing out places where we need to go look for that again. So we, we have done that for our prior locations and with our new geographies, we're going to continue that effort. As outlined in the, in our Streets Plan update, we have implemented very large numbers of leading pedestrian intervals and other signalized safety improvements, and we are absolutely going to continue doing that at the places where it's most needed.
So for 2019, did you meet the goal of, of doing this for all of those priority intersections already? Moving on to New York City Streets Plan, in April of 2022, Mayor Adams announced a historic investment of more than $900 million that the council, you know, was in support of to tackle the city's traffic violence crisis and ensure that New York City is safer, healthier and greener. The investment included nearly $580 million in capital funding and more than $65 million annually in expense funding, or $327 million over five years, in an effort to advance the goals laid out in the New York City Streets Plan, while also building out critical street safety and public transportation infrastructure. Transportation equity has always been a major concern for me, as you all know. Compared to the citywide average in city council districts where the majority of residents are black, the rate of traffic fatalities is 16% higher. What efforts is DOT taking to prioritize equity in building infrastructure projects across the city?
I, I always say that no one will be championing the fight for equity than myself because I've been living in the underserved community my whole life. And from Councilmember Brewer, who we started serving together at that time, 2009, to you Chair and many others that I served last year, you know that for me, it's not about a word, it's about action, it's about a fight. It's about to reassure the community that were left behind for so many decades, for the first time give the necessary attention. So I've been showing that by action. What we have seen is a numbers of project that under the leadership of Mayor Eric Adams and I and the advocate that you bring and the speaker and many other who are saying, you know, we have to be progressive by action, we have to reassure that, you know, underserved community get the same attention as the others who are the latter, the most wealthy, those are more organized. So Eric can explain about specific project that we're doing in underserved community. But what I can tell is about, this is a top priority, not only for us, it's a priority not for the advocate TA, it's a priority for you. And the project that speak myself, how in 2022, as I say, you know, we overpassed everything that we committed to do. Like in, as I said before, in January 22, Mayor Adams announced and I'm the citywide, that the city will be, city, in the city, we will improve 1,000 intersection because we heard from the advocate, we heard from the council, and even myself as a councilmember before, we know that it was an important number for us to accomplish. However, we overpassed that number, we went to 1,600 intersection improvement through different treatment and that's why we were able to end 2022 with better number that we have in 20, in the previous year, but Eric can explain with more details.
Sure, and, and something that we're very proud of is in the original, the New York City Streets Plan, we added this idea of priority investment areas, which are parts of the city that have been historically not, been invested in by, for transportation infrastructure. And we looked both at where there were concentrations of people with low income and people of color, as whereas literally where the city had not implemented projects over the past decade. And we, we use this as a planning tool to make sure that we're giving extra attention to those places that had been historically disinvested. So that's from a planning perspective, how we're making sure that we actively include that in our approach, but ultimately we should be measured by our progress and our results. And that's something that we're looking at very carefully is to make sure that the projects that we are implementing, as well as what we care most about, the reductions in crashes and fatalities, are also happening in, in communities all over the city and not just in, in wider or wealthier areas. So that's an analysis that we take very seriously. We're happy to talk about it with you in, in more detail, but it has become very core under this administration to how we do our work.
And, and one, as you know, Chair, like 2022, we also took all the project that we were doing that usually they say is Summit Street, that used to be only up to 79th Street, we took it to 109. Now we are expanding to Brooklyn, to Queens, because we also feel that this is also about engaging all New Yorkers in this conversation about transportation. And, you know, for the first time again, in DOT, we have a director of connecting the agency with the immigrants community. We also have for the first time a director of the workforce development. So I feel that again, with your leadership and the leadership of the speaker of each councilmember and those who really been fighting for equity in underserved community, we will see much more attention to community that they were never seeing in the past.
Just really quickly, just going back to the question about reducing hit and runs and just the theme that I keep hearing in some of the responses, DOT keeps saying that you need Albany to pass laws, but DOT has control over our streets and our street design. What can DOT do now to reduce hit and runs without waiting for Albany? Like what are the tools in the toolbox for right now?
It's about, it's about working around what Vision Zero stand for. Vision Zero combined three aspects. One is engineering and that's what the team that Eric lead is doing it. And that's why if you separate the numbers of pedestrians and cyclists in 2022, only if you just look at those number, those data, we have the lowest number of pedestrian and cyclists losing their life as a result of crashes. It was the speeding the highway, there were the two young lady who were in a car in FDR around 93rd Street with a drunk driver, like early in the morning. It was the other two lady who were in a car under the GW who flipped onto the Antra rail, who also lose their life and many other reckless drivers. So when it comes to, you know, a hit and run, and as you know, this was an important priority for me as a previous role, as a councilmember, this is an epidemic, you know, that, that is, unfortunately is hurting our society, that is so influenced by reckless drivers. Most drivers who get involved in this, in their, in the hit and run, they are drunk when they're driving, they are speeding. I mean, when I went to Albany, standing with Senator John Lu, who is the sponsor of the, of the, of the new bill at Albany that will reduce the level of alcohol that is permitted from 0.8 to 0.5, I, I was standing with this lady whose son was killed when a driver was driving 190 mile per hour. So those are drunk drivers, those are driving that speed and say, you're right. Our, our agency led by Eric, they doing the work on redesigning the street. And I, and I share with you and everyone here how the data is showing improvement with the work, the result that we are getting because of the redesigning, what that we're doing. And that's why in the whole nation, New York City by data, had a safer street when we compare to California or we compare to any other city here. So a lot of more work will be done, we will continue building on our society, on society story that we have, but you know, like I feel that when it comes to the hit and run, as you say, we control the redesigning, we will continue doing the work, NYPD is doing the enforcement part, and I know that there's going to be all the work that Albany has to do to go after those, the hit and run epidemic that is also hidden or that sometimes also has some, something to do with some law that also we need to Albany.
DOT was required by law to publish a report by February 1st, providing any changes to the Streets Plan from the previous year, the Bicycle Lane Network Coverage Index and the status of implementation of each benchmark identified in such plan. DOT published this report today, which was two weeks late, but I'm interested in knowing, following up to the fact that DOT announced they would create a database of all data tables to allow users to analyze historical asset data to ensure resources are distributed appropriately amongst priority projects is the greatest need. What is the status of this database and why is it so hard to track where priority Vision Zero projects are happening?
Let me, I'm going to call on Julia Kyle Leal, who is the Director of Safety Policy, who obviously that part, what we do and to explain.
In general, we keep our data available on our Vision Zero View website, vzv.nyc. Speaking specifically to the Streets Plan, Eric, I believe, would you like to speak forward and we could bring up somebody who is a specialist specifically in the Streets Plan?
Yeah, great. And with the Streets Plan, as you say, we're, we're, you know, sorry, it was two weeks late, but we are pleased that we did get it out today. And, you know, we are committed to following up on everything that's in there. I think what you see in the report is that we exceeded expectations in, in some areas, you know, because the Commissioner said, we addressed over 1,600 intersections compared to a Streets Plan target of 400. And in other places, we're still really working towards those milestones. And so I think we're really trying to make sure that we're putting our effort into the places where it's most beneficial for the most number of New Yorkers. And we're, we're happy to sort of talk more about places that you want more focus or places where you feel like the data could be better available because we, we are committed to open data and making that available and if it's not clear enough, we can work to make it better.
And Chair, the two area that we are behind are into bike lane and bus lane. As a Commissioner, previous councilmember, I ask you for your-
And bus stop upgrades.
I ask you for your support and leadership to help me to accomplish those goal because I know that our team had a plan on how to accomplish those numbers in 23. But one challenge that we face on time is that when we go to this, to community, there's some major opposition when we plan to bring bus lane and bike lane. So I hope that we, again, as we have done it before, we work together to, to, to build the level of partnership that we need so that we can continue making more progress on building more bus lane and bike lane. Those are two of the most important areas.
I actually thought that the reason was because of a supply chain issue.
Now that, like, there's many factors involved, including that one, including staff, including many things. But we all know that bus lane and bike lane, they're not popular in many districts. Get all my friend, former councilcolleagues together, when I did the bus lane on 191st, I had the opposition of- I had the opposition of the rest of the electoral official.
I was supportive, I was supportive.
So the bus lane, the bike lane, those big project, when we go to some community, there's major opposition. So I feel that, you know, beside other reason why, but in building the support, and what I hope is again, that we continue, you know, planning together, but I also, we need your support and leadership and the council to be sure that as we are planning our mile bus lane and bike lane in 23, that also we are on board.
I've, I've also heard from some of my colleagues that there are areas where they're requesting bike lanes and bus lanes, and they have not received them. So I think, you know, it's going to be important for DOT to work closely, to have conversations, and also prioritize where there are members that are saying, we would like it in this location, and it seems like it goes on deaf ears. But then we have bike lanes that pop up in communities, like we have some that have popped up in Rockaway with little to no conversation, as opposed to when it, when it's being implemented to say, this is where it's going. And that's the, that's the pushback that DOT is receiving, because sufficient communication with the communities is not happening in a, in a meaningful way. So doing a presentation, hearing the community, and then still implementing what DOT wants to implement, that's where you see challenges, because the community knows where it's best. Right now, Seagirt was redesigned, and we've had many near fatal situations happen since that design has happened a few months ago. But this is something that the community proactively shared with DOT, that this would be an issue. When you look on putting the bike lane on Beach 21st Street in far Rockaway with no protection, and then you have the cars parked there, because it's just literally a hump there in paint, which is also a challenge for the disability community. So there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen. It's not that members do not want this in their community, it's that they want to have the community at the table in a real meaningful way to implement this. And then also for the ones that are asking for it, they like to see action happening on it. But I'm going to yield right now to Council Number One, who had a follow-up question.
If you don't mind, on that particular one that you mentioned, we understand the safety concern there, in particularly surrounding the safety of the student and teacher at the nearby school. And considering the bike lane was completed in early December, it is too soon to provide data showing the changes in crash data since installation. But one thing that also, because I know that you and I are on the same pace, we ask on the equity part, so we also want to be sure, and I just share that as a typical thing that happened in many of districts, is about, I, bike lane is not popular in northern Manhattan. Bus lane, busway was not popular on 191st. There was not that support. However, you know, get rights, it was there supporting me, but I don't have hundreds members of TA that they want to come in the board to support those project. So I feel again, I agree, we have, we will continue again, coordinating, having conversation, because one thing that also we want to avoid it, is that we, if we talk about equity, you know, they ask for many of those projects usually happen for, in a, in a district already are getting a lot of attention. So we want to be sure that we spread the investment. We want to be sure that we know that when we do a bike lane and a bus lane, especially the bike lane, they are important only for the cyclists. But in a corridor that we put a bike lane, there's a reduction of crashes, because drivers are forced to slow down. But again, I will continue planning with you, coordinating with you. I know that our heart in the same place when it came to equity and to be sure that we spread those investments.
Thank you so much, Chair, Solvina Brooks-Powers, and thank you to Commissioner Yudonis and everybody else who's here. I just had a follow-up question on the data piece. I know that OTI and the city overall has spent millions of dollars to make sure that there's data transparency for DOT, because out of my office, since taking office a year ago, I have more than 1,600 cases for constituent services, and more than 50% of them are for DOT. So DOT is probably the most popular category on 311, as well as in my own council tracker. So right now, there has been a number of missing reports by DOT, and it's a, and it's overall very concerning for the lack of transparency. Can you share why this is and what steps are being taken to improve data access and timeliness? Because this is worse than previous years. For example, I'm going to read all of the missing reports. First time a Vision Zero annual report was not published this past year. And we talk a lot about Vision Zero, then why are we not having transparency on the Vision Zero report that is missing? No annual cycling in the city report, no annual green wave report, no mobility reports, serious injury quarterly reports as required thanks to the council legislation. That was two to three months late, including quarter four in 2022's report, which was due January 31st. Streets Plan report, February 1st report deadline was missed. No Open Streets report as required by council legislation. Loading Zone website was due by January 1st. DOT's Vision Zero dashboard is often two to three months behind, that doesn't even include other motorists, AKA e-bike, also known as e-bikes category, which started tracking in 2021, and folds those fatalities under motorists. So the total number of fatalities is also about one to two fatalities off for almost every year, and DOT is aware of this. So can you help me understand why you are being opaque in your reporting?
Yeah, we will, and Rick Rodriguez, who is our Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental and Community Fair, he will take into that question. If I had to add, then I will add after he explain.
Yeah, thank you for your question. I think several of those reports, I think, were published a few weeks late, and some have already come out. But I think what would be useful is just, we give a exchange of what reports are outstanding that you're aware of, and we will make sure that we follow up on each of those. As for what is being done, we cite in our testimony that we have staffing challenges, and that's something that I think that it's not unique to the agency, the city, or the country right now. But we're very aware that we want to keep working on that. We want to be providing that information, which is why we are trying to publish all those reports that we issued today, because it's important that folks have that, that they can ask questions, and we want to respond to them.
Okay, we'll definitely follow up with the full list, so that we can understand where the reports are and why there's a delay. And I just have one final question about my district. For the Queensborough Bridge, we've seen at least 35% increase in bike and other micro-mobility trips since 2020, especially during COVID, when people did not feel safe being on the subway or on the bus. Yet, we have not seen any increase in space. And we hear, we hear, and not only hear, but we also see photographs and videos of the crashes that are happening on the, on the walkway. Does DOT have data about the number of crashes on this path? And what has DOT done to make this path safer? Because I know, Commissioner, you were kind enough to come out with us, as well as with the Chair of Transportation, Brooks-Powers, to come and see how dangerous it was. And why have we still not opened the South Outer Roadway as promised, and as the budget has already been allocated to accommodate the increased traffic to protect pedestrians and people on the bikes?
Yep. So again, I will start answering the question, and Eric also wants to add to that one, but DOT is committed to making a Queensborough Bridge even more cyclist and pedestrian-friendly by providing designated space for each mode use. However, we are mindful of the increased traffic delays, the conversation of the sword to a pedestrian's only path. Or the pedestrian only path would have while the current upper deck replacement project is active. Eric, would you like to?
Yeah, I would just say, our commitment remains the same, that we are committed to opening the South Outer Roadway as the pedestrian path, and we're committed to doing it immediately following the completion of that upper deck reconstruction. So it's, we are actively working on it, it's part of the same piece of work, and, you know, we, we want to get that upper deck work as soon as we can.
The commitment doesn't remain the same, because the commitment was to be open by this year. So I just want to put that on the record. And then I also just want to close out by saying that I have concerns, and I know that many community members and my colleagues also have concerns that daycares and childcare providers are not, not protected as schools in this system.
The work again, that, you know, up to, up to construction on the upper roadway will continue through these years, you said. And I know that this is, as we are, you know, committed to work toward a goal, DOT will continue working to identify opportunity to expedite the timeline, and we will monitor construction on the bridge and address any issues in the, during the meantime.
Also, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify on the data issue. We count e-bikes as bicycles for our statistics. The other motorized category includes things such as e-scooters, illegal mopeds that can't be registered as limited-use motorcycles. If you believe that there's a glitch, please let us know, and we'll look into that. But it's been our policy for several years that e-bikes with pedals are always included as bicycles.
That is not a correct way to aggregate data. They should be disaggregated, because they're a completely different category. But I'll follow up later, because I know that we have a lot of questions to go through. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Brooks-Powers.
Thank you. So I'm going to just run through the members' questions and come back to myself, because I have a lot of questions. So next, we're going to hear from Councilmember Harrius.
Great, thank you, Chair. And I'm just going to read a statement prior about my REZO. Thank you, Chair Brooks-Powers, for hosting this critical hearing, and Commissioner Rodriguez for being here today to testify. I'm the sponsor of REZO 441, because the Bronx continues to be disproportionately affected by traffic fatalities. As a proud Bronxite, it's heartbreaking to know that traffic fatalities continue to increase above the pre-pandemic rates. We need safety infrastructure for, for our drivers and our riders, especially after 16 children in New York City lost their lives in 2022 due to traffic crashes. That's why I'm a proud sponsor to have introduced REZO 441 to support the state's call to set a five mile per hour speed limit on streets participating in the Open Streets Program. Pedestrian industries fell 42% from pre-pandemic levels within the first 12 months of the start of the program, as well as a 17% decrease in cyclist industry injuries during the same period. This law would not only make our streets safer, but allow families and pedestrians a greater peace of mind when partaking in the loved Open Streets Program. Safety and the expansion of open public space, as expressed by all of us here today, needs to continue to be the priority. I want to thank advocates like those here with us today, from Families for Safe Streets, Transportation Alternatives, Assemblymember Harvey Epstein, DOT, and more, who are working with us every day to ensure we're being proactive and protective for Bronxites and all New Yorkers. So thank you so much. And I just have a couple of questions around, particularly around the Bronx and my district. So in city council districts, districts where the majority of residents are Latino, there are 17% fewer streets with bus lanes, traffic volumes are 11% higher, and buses are 10% slower. Making bus speeds in majority Latino districts the slowest buses of any racial or ethnic group in New York City. And in 10 council districts with the most traffic injuries, 87% of residents are people of color. Compared to 67% citywide, then there are 42% fewer streets with protected bike lanes than the citywide average, including within my district. But I know DOT, we are working really hard on that. So traffic deaths in the Bronx have continued to rise. The Bronx had 56 deaths in 2022, tied for highest in the last 20 years, and about two times higher than 2019. More Bronx bike riders were killed in 2020, '21, and '22 combined than the 11 years prior to 2020 combined. What's DOT doing to address Vision Zero needs in the Bronx and prioritize safe infrastructure projects in BIPOC communities?
So, as I said before, you are a champion.
Thank you.
And, and I hope that, you know, that everyone, all New Yorkers, they point six to be a champion like you. Sometimes they make a big difference. You know, like, I say that, you know, this is a city where the most wealthy, the most organized, the one, they have a lot of voices, they've been getting most attention. But they say, Mayor Adam, he said, not anymore, not in my leadership. So, but we have this approach from this administration. And myself, being someone that been fighting for equity myself, still believing discrimination every day in my life, and even today, you know, I know what it is to fight for equity. So this is not a privilege, this is not about to talk about it, this is about action. But also having leader like you, that is hope enough to bring to your district, to let or not, to say, we have to redesign this intersection. It doesn't matter if the resident that I represent, I part of the largest working-class New Yorker, they need to be, get the same investment that we do in any community, that the average income is $300,000. So I feel it's a many factor. One is, of course, the commitment of this administration. Second is the agency vision when it comes to spread the investment. We're giving attention to the 51 council member. It's not the latter one, it's not the one that have more resources, that will be, continue getting most attention investment, as that happened in the past. So this is a new thing that we're doing, and so we will continue working with you to be sure that your district and those district, where the data is showing that we've been getting the larger numbers of victim and crashes, get the same level of investment that any other community in the city.
Thank you, I appreciate reaffirming that commitment. Chair, if you don't mind, I have just have two questions. Okay. In 2022, we have protected bike lane locations in areas where those within .25 miles are significantly more likely to be white, and significantly less likely to be black, than the citywide average of 39.8% and 23.4% for each of those respectively. And the, so the percent of residents earning over $100,000 a year within .25 miles was 16.8% versus the citywide average of about 10.8%. Obviously, we know all of these things are interconnected, as you just said, around advocacy in communities. How is DOT working to change some of those percentages? And without safe infrastructure efforts, our efforts to increase city bike and e-micro, micro-mobility access won't be possible without putting residents at risk of getting hit by a car. So what are we doing in this area to really focus on changing those percentages?
Yeah. So we are a data-driven, and Eric can speak into the technical part of that one, but most important, that the data piece that he will explain, is about the new vision that we have at City Hall, is the commitment, as I said before, from the mayor. You know, the, if the $5 million that we baseline, the council in this administration, for the first time, as we pass a bill at this council that make New York City the first city that create a community media on the administration of Mayor Eric Adams, 50% of those investment are used to educate, you know, all New Yorkers. Where we advertise about bus lane, bike lane, where we advertise about the benefit of a transportation plan, when we work toward engaging the community and we put that money out, in 2022, we, we publish in blog, radio, TV, newspaper, in more than 12 languages, because we want to be sure that the conversation about planning and transportation is not just controlled by one group, but that the average New Yorkers is also part of that conversation. And that's why in my office, I have created the Director of Liaison between DOT and all the immigrants community, because we want to be sure that, as I held a meeting yesterday with Rosanne, the Commissioner of Stiting Island, and more than 40 leader of the interfaith community, as they say, is the first time that Commissioner of DOT has invited the interfaith community to talk about transportation. So as someone that used to be a teacher, that used to be an activist, I found out in my, so you're a council member, that the, that the conversation of transportation have been, were excluding the average New Yorkers. And this is what we're doing this time around. We are coming to your community. We want to follow your guidance and your feedback about who should we meet in your community? How can we integrate, you know, all New Yorkers when it comes to the conversation about how can we invest to improve safety in our streets?
And I would just add, we think you're right. We think there has historically been, our protected bike infrastructure in particular, has historically been in whiter and wealthier parts of the city. And something that we're very focused on is making sure that we are truly building a citywide connected protected bike lane network, including in Soundview, including in Fordham, including in East New York, that, that, you know, places where, where we need to do the work, as the commissioner said, to really engage with communities and talk about the benefits of cycling, and why it's important to be in every community. And that's sometimes a little bit harder and more work, but it's work we need to do, because it really does need to be a safe network that reaches all parts of the city.
Sure.
So we think we have more coming this year, but there's a lot more work to do.
Sure. So just since you've been down to the data guy over there in the days, are we looking at these percentages, like, you know, of comparatively seeing, you know, predominantly white neighborhoods have this, and this is what their communities look like versus Black, Latinx, immigrant? And how can we overlay some of this infrastructure? And I, and I ask on, are we zoning in on the demographic data in that way? Because this is how our communities are comparing or viewing their either street safety, or their accessibility to micro-mobility options, right? When I hear things in community, I hear, I hear When I hear things in community, I hear folks say, "Well, the wealthy neighborhoods have this," or "The white neighborhoods have this." And it's not that we're not deemed of value, or our communities can't have it. It is obviously folks advocating for it in the past and ensuring that we have that safety infrastructure working in. Now, I'm working with my Borough Commissioner really diligently on ensuring we get to rule that out, as you folks know, on where we can provide safety in my communities. But are we back at headquarters, like, looking at this data and saying, "How do we expedite it in these neighborhoods?" Because we know we have Black cyclists and we have Latinx e-bike riders, et cetera.
So, the answer is yes. That's our approach internally at DOT and LeBeyary, that's a big effort. But also, the leadership of the other members, in this case, the colleague at the council is very important. The advocate also play an important role. You know, one of the reason why, when I come to my hearing, I come with all my four commissioners, is because I want to be sure that they hear the story, that they are sitting here. And it's me and everyone, from Nicole Garcia, to Kevin DeBronz, to Kevin Brooklyn, to Rosanne in Siting Island, you know, everyone is sitting back there. And they know that we are, you know, I'm not going to be wasting my time as a commissioner. I'm using this space that I have, as a councilmember, my 15 years as a teacher, to move the needle. You know, equity has to be an action, and this is important for us. And that's why, for me, we are doing a job. We're getting the support of this mayor. The mayor's putting his money where his mouth is. He increased 18% of budget last year so that we can have the resources that we need. But also, we are, as I said before, we are engaging with the community so that nothing wrong, like, you know, with any particular group of New Yorkers who have the bike lane, but also, we have to use the cultural value of many New Yorkers. In this case, I was born and raised in 1965, born in 1965. My father already had a bike. So, many immigrants that live in those underserved community, they also come from places that they were supposed to be a cyclist. But what happened is that everything switched. The higher academic group in any society, they learn, as a minister of transportation Ireland say, that if you ride a bike half an hour, if you ride half an hour a bike every day, you have an average extension of six years in your life. So, this is something that is more middle, upper class, the higher academic. And the other group of New Yorkers, those who come from country, from Ghana, from Mali, from Nigeria, from Latin America, that they used to use, come from family of bike or cycling, they were told that cycling was equal poverty and a car became a symbol of progress. So, we are also working with leader like you to engage the interfaith community, to work with the grassroots community, to be sure that the conversation about planning our city around cycling, our pedestrians, also involve the underserved community and is not controlled only by one particular group.
Thank you so much. I will wait for second round for my last question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we're going to hear from Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you so much, Chair Brooks-Powers. And I just want to firstly thank the women from Families for Safe Streets for sharing their stories, their horrible stories about deaths that could have been prevented, that should have been prevented. Your testimony was incredibly powerful. And I just want to say that it's inspiring, you know, despite the loss and the pain that you've experienced, that you've turned that into advocacy so that more New Yorkers don't have to lose loved ones. And I want to thank Commissioner Rodriguez for joining us. It's always good to have you back in the council and commend you for hiring some of my favorite people, like your Assistant Commissioner for Intergovernmental Affairs. But I do want to focus today on just the extraordinary number of vacancies that we're experiencing at the Department of Transportation. I was profoundly troubled to review the PMMR, the Mayor's Management Report from just a couple of weeks ago to find DOT has almost 800 vacancies. Data from the PMMR showed that the number of leading pedestrian intervals installed declined 43%. Pavement safety markings installed declined 20%. DOT added only 18.1 miles of bike, 18.1 bike lane miles in the first four months of FY23, down 42% from the same period last year. Bus lane miles installed in the first four months of FY23 were down almost half of what were installed in FY22. I know your heart's in the right place, Commissioner, but you can't do the work if you don't have the staff. And I am deeply troubled by this administration's commitment to financial austerity and shrinking the size of government at the expense of achieving the goals that you are espousing and intending to actually implement. So, what conversations are you having with City Hall? How are you going to get this fixed? What is the current DOT headcount? And what is the plan to actually have an adequate DOT headcount to be able to make these obvious safety improvements that are needed to protect our communities?
First of all, Councilmembers, and I also appreciate, you know, your leadership on transportation and especially in this matter too. As someone that I know have your heart in the right place, that always also been advocating for, you know, the good cause in our city, in all the transportation by many of the areas. So, I know that we have a lot of things in common. Look, there's challenges nationwide with headcount, with staffing, people, they were into COVID, working more remote, a lot of people relocating. So, you know, I was in a conference in DC, there was one of the top workshops about, you know, initiative that must be taking place in order to create a pipeline. What I did, what that I brought to City College, the president of City College, Vincent Butrow, I brought the Deputy Chancellor of Union, Hector Batista, and they came out with the Dean of the School of Engineer, the School of Architect, to the Colling Power Institute in order to work closer between DOT and City College, that had the School of Engineer, that graduated a larger numbers of Black engineer in the whole nation. So, we taking a step. So, like, months ago, or three weeks ago, we hold a Jaffir, you know, that run by your friend also, Polo Choa, in our HR, you know.
You do have a tendency to hire my friends. I like that.
They're great.
It's good.
They're great.
They are good. Pause the best.
We had a great team.
We may have to take a look at that, Commissioner.
So, I cannot complain. You know, from Margaret F. Yoney to Polo Choa, to, you know, the rest of the team, Julie Barrow, another friend of yours. So, what I say is about, yeah, there's challenges on hiring, there's challenges on headcount. We are taking proactive, like, I got Glennie Gomez, he used to be at DOE. For the first time, DOE brought someone in charge of workforce development. We are then, I'm going to be having a walk with Chancellor and banks, because, from DOE, because also, I want to create the pipeline between, you know, the New York City Public School and the new, the future planners, the future engineer, the future commissioner. So, answer, there's challenges, but we are taking proactive action.
Commissioner, I appreciate it. I know there are challenges nationwide, but I am deeply troubled by the specific policies of this administration. And we're looking for solutions from you and from your team and from the administration as a whole to start staffing up. If we don't, you know, we suffered as many deaths from gun violence last year as traffic violence. These are preventable deaths that we can avoid. But we need the staff to actually do the work to install the bike lanes, to install the bus lanes, to make sure that the pedestrian safety improvements are happening. And so, when it comes to policies, like, multiple vacancies are required to replace them with one person. When it comes to policies, like, you're not allowed to hire within the full range of the job posting. When it comes to having to jump through 77 hoops from OMB to be able to get a position filled, and we know this administration has deliberately worked to prevent hiring, to save money, despite huge budget surpluses, despite record general reserves, and it is making us unsafe. And we need to recognize that, and we need you to staff up as quickly as possible. And we would love to get regular updates of everything DOT is doing to put the staff in place to keep our communities safe.
Yeah. I feel, I will assure, I don't know, everyone know, right, their own data. I believe that every branch of government have been dealing with short staff, but...
Not every agency in the city of New York.
But, but...
Take a look at the Department of Sanitation. I could list others. Uniformed agencies versus civilian agencies are very different.
But let me give you the answer, Lincoln. So, Councilmember.
Sorry, Commissioner.
So, my answer to you is, I recognize that there's a, and I say in my testimony, that there is a reduction of hundreds of position at DOT, as we have in the city, many agencies, as we have nationwide. Then you ask the question, "What are we doing?" First of all, the mayor is putting his money where his mouth is. The mayor added $370 something million in the state of the district so that DOT will continue having the resources. What are we doing on bringing back to staff? As I said before, we established collaboration between DOT and City College. We hold a Jaffir with dozen of candidate, they got a letter of a job offer already with the condition that they will be graduating in May. This past weekend, we joined with DC 37, where also, they hold hundreds of, a Jaffir with hundreds of candidates. We also are working with the high schools, so with the different high schools out, that we provide more internship in our schools. So, I feel that we getting the support that we need from this mayor, and we are taking the necessary step to fulfill those vacancy that we have.
I know you want to fill these jobs, and I appreciate very much, Chair Brooks-Powers, for giving me the latitude to just dig in on this point. I will shut, I will shut up now. I just want to, I just want to say, I know that you want to have a fully staffed agency to be able to do this work. I know you want to achieve these goals. We are not keeping New Yorkers safe without the staff. And we can put all the capital money in that we want, but if we don't have the staff to actually implement the programs, it's not going to make a difference. So, I really, really, really hope that we can work together. I will partner with you in each and every way that I can to help send good people to DOT, in addition to Paul and Ricardo and the other good people you've already hired. So, thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate your thoughtful response.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. I had a question about the school safety program. How are you determining which schools to prioritize?
So, we have a... And the question is, like, with the school safety in two directions. One is, I can share, first of all, if you talk about the crashes that happen around the school, or the educational program that we have in each schools? Or do you want me to explain both?
Oh, the above. Because I've met with the school safety program at DOT, and I don't feel that they were really helpful in assisting with a ton of traffic safety concerns around schools. And I asked them, "How are they prioritizing which schools to provide resources to?" And the answer wasn't really adequate.
So, in any way, or how I can follow with you, more than happy. And again, I know that we had a great team in DOT. I don't know, there's another city with a, with a, the city Department of Transportation that have a large program of education that we have in New York City. Of course, more than, a lot of work has to be done and much more too. In our city, we have a person who is in charge, so it's about the public safety in our schools. And then, we have the other person, there's the other program that we have that work around everything improving safety. So, we do one thing, we look at the data, and Eric will explain that part. And then, based on the data, we work around improving safety. In many cases, that doesn't happen in front of the school, they happen around the school. So, Eric, we explain more details on that one. When it comes to the educational one, I say, I read in the testimony, and I say before, King, who is also here, is a person who is in charge of the educational components of DOT. They work very closely, hundreds of a school every year. By there's any area on how we can improve, more than happy to hear from you. But Eric can explain the...
And I know, yes, Eric can explain. I know my time is limited, so I just wanted to add just another point. Because I know in your testimony, you said that you could not support the bill as drafted, Councilmember Rivera's bill. And so, if you don't agree with that bill, and there's some data that show that signs don't necessarily affect traffic safety, what other measures are being researched or piloted that go beyond an always stop, or a speed bump, or other traffic mitigators that your agency may decline? So, I have quite a few issues with schools, and our office has worked with DOT to try to get some type of mitigator, but unfortunately, it was denied because it didn't fit a set criteria. And so, I think when it comes to our schools, because, as you mentioned, we have such a robust program, we should try to find more innovative ways, like the ones you show here. But again, just wanted to know how schools are prioritized in the efforts that you all are doing.
And first of all, thank you for your leadership too. And as someone, another former teacher, we know how important it is to improve safety around our school, on redesigning a near intersection, but also educating, you know, our communities about, you know, the responsibility for someone, when they drive a vehicle, to know, like, why does it come when someone get behind the wheel? And how they had to, the driver, they are the one that are responsible to protect the pedestrian, protect the cyclist. So, the educational piece is something that we share, as I said before, father to daughter, co-founder to school, teacher for 15 year, I get it. But when it comes to the technical piece on the redesigning, how we made decision, let's hear from Eric, how DOT work with that.
Sure. And we are very data-driven around how, both how we look at locations and then which treatments we try to install. So, we look at where are crashes happening, in particular, where are crashes involving young people happening, both as a total number, and where are our students sort of overrepresented in terms of crashes overall? So, places where maybe students are walking, but not everyone else is. And we use those to focus around the school. Then, when we look at that school, we say, "Where are the crashes happening in this vicinity?" Sometimes, it's the block right in front of the school. Sometimes, it might be the big intersection, a block or two away. But we try to make sure that we're focused on the places where the most crashes are really happening. And then, we go to our toolbox and we say, "What really affects crashes and reduces them?" And as you say, sometimes something fits and sometimes it doesn't. But overall, we think that the most effective thing we can do is reduce speeds on our streets. So, sometimes, the speed bump is the way to do that. Sometimes, we do a road diet with, which might have a protected bike lane. But ultimately, it's about making sure that people drive slowly enough that they can be responsive, you know, whether they're doing something wrong, whether someone dashes out into the street. If you're driving more slowly, you can react to what's happening there. So, that's how we think about it. But if there's a location we need to take another look at, we're always happy to do that with you. We think we do a good job, but it doesn't mean we haven't missed something along the way, and we're happy to take a look at any location you have in mind.
Yeah. I know the real work happens outside of the hearings. I do look forward to having a follow-up meeting with the school safety program because, as I mentioned, there's quite a few schools that have a lot of issues. And one of the things that, and I'll wrap up really quickly, I see the chair is beaming at me, is understanding data is important for government to find solutions, but it's also reactionary. You're looking at data of crashes and saying, "Oh, there's been so many crashes here, let's do something." But I always encourage and hope that the agency is also looking at proactive measures. So, maybe you don't have, like, horrific traffic fatalities, but there's clearly issues that people, particularly the students, like, I've had student governments, you know, elementary students, present to me all of the issues, and most of them have to do with traffic safety. And it's very discouraging as their representative to kind of work with DOT to try to find solutions to no avail. So, I am hoping that I can work with you to try to find, even if it's a creative solution for some of the traffic safety issues we have around schools. And last but not least, it's not a question, but just a statement, I have said on the record multiple times that it is unfortunate that the Queens Boulevard bus lane doesn't come down to Jamaica. And so, I understand your commentary around and not being popular, but I don't think that is where we should stop. We should work together to educate the community and make sure that there is even just connectivity to a bus lane that doesn't come down to Jamaica Avenue or other areas of the district that might be more appropriate versus arbitrarily slapping down a bus lane and then getting upset if the community doesn't like it. There needs to be just better engagement. So, thank you and look forward to working with you.
So, Chairman, we working on that. So, on the Queens Boulevard bus going to Jamaica, so let's be sure that our team will follow with your office. And the other matter that you said, that, you know, our team look at it, they explain that cannot be done because engineer has a bias that, you know, that we cannot do it. So, more than happy to follow with you. And any idea, any schools also you have in your district that you would like for us as a DOT to engage those students on this conversation about how they see crashes, what idea they may have about improving safety, not only with Councilmember Williams, but any councilmember? We want to go to the school with you. We want to be sure, and again, that's how we can build a pipeline. If we expose our student in this conversation about challenges or improving safety in their community, they will see that being a planner, being an engineer, being working at DOT is something that they can see as a potential career in the future. So, let's continue in touch.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. First, I want to say thank you to Ed Pinkar, as a great Manhattan Commissioner. First, I want to say thank you to Ed Pinker as a great Manhattan Commissioner. I want to make that clear. The question is just about the plan because I think we all agree that that plan has some positive aspects that it has already accomplished. But as you suggested, Commissioner, the protected bike lanes, benchmark target twenty twenty-two is twenty and four point four according to your data. And then the, that's the bus lanes. The bike lane's a little bit better, thirty target, twenty-six point three completed. And of course, there are other things that have even exceeded completion, but there's still a problem with the bus stop upgrades, the benches and the time clocks. So my question is, twenty twenty-three, we're in this year, do you expect, and you're under oath, that you can make those benchmarks this year? Because I think we all agree that those benchmarks being completed do stop crashes. And that's the whole general. We don't know, we obviously have to pick certain locations, but the more we do, then the less hopefully we'll have crashes. So how are we going to make the twenty twenty-three? Limited staff, of course, I think that we should be a hybrid city. The mayor and I disagree. You should pay people more, that's more of a collective bargaining issue sometimes. But for God's sake, make it hybrid and then at least you could hire one person. But to start with, how are we going to get there for twenty twenty-three?
To answer the question and Eric also can add to that, to, to add to. DOT believe that, you know, in the goal of a street plan and is working continually to meet the benchmark. We are also worried, we are also doing all the work, as you know, beyond the street plan that is critical, as I mentioned before, that include bike lane hardening. We met with the, with the advocate, you know, at the beginning of last year. And we talked about what was most important, the quantity of the quality. And we focus on doing those twenty hardening bike lane. We did ten last year. We also working to do the additional ten this year. But also we doing the open street, as you heard from a speaker other, and there's conversation going on between her staff and, and Chairman Velazquez and, and the administration. And we hope again that open street will go to the final place where we both can agree on, on, on making open street permanent. We also doing, I'm sorry, open restaurant. I'm sorry.
We know, we know what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah. So the open restaurant meant. And, and then with the open street, remember when we were having, you know, the remote call, the meeting at the council and the administration and we think about open street? But during COVID, it was about putting barricades. So last year, for the first time, we worked with two hundred, above two hundred open street. And they were open street with partnership with the BID, the, and the, the CBOs. And this year, we are also working to increase those, to go higher with the numbers of the two hundred. And what I'm doing, so, so I hold a press conference with Commissioner Combo because we want for open street to be seen from the cultural and, and commissioner perspective, which she's agreed. But I also have a meeting with the commissioner of, of public hospital in our city so that also we bring the, the whole aspect when it came to open street. So we also doing those project and then intersection announcements, including race crosswalk. This is something that also we've been adding and state legislative advocates to hold the most dangerous driving accountable, but.
Okay, I appreciate all that and I know exactly what you're talking about, but I'm interested in the plan and the twenty twenty-three and the benchmarks that you're going to make in twenty twenty-three. Are we going to do it? I know you have staffing issues. I can solve them. To go hybrid, you're done and over. That's up to the mayor, if he wants to hire or not. But the other issue is, you've got, you know, supply chain issues, I understand. But how are we going to get to twenty twenty-three? What are we going to do in twenty twenty-three?
Let's see up front, Eric, who oversee that portfolio.
Sure. And we're going to work to the best of our ability to, to meet those targets. But I think we also want to make sure that we're not just guided by the number of miles, but that we're doing the projects that are most impactful for the number of people. You know, we, we know that inherent to the laws, they had, is it's measured by miles. But with things like bus lanes and bike lanes, it's just as important to make sure we're doing them where they benefit a lot of people, where we're building a connected network all over the city. So we, we want to be doing both. We want to be working towards those milestones and meeting them to the best of our abilities. But we also want to make sure we're not just measuring our work by miles.
All right, I got it. I, I don't agree with the answer, but I understand. Now, are you monitoring your progress? Is it real time with a, some kind of a benchmark? How do you, or dashboard? How does the public know your progress, specifically real time?
So we, we do, we, we have, you know, open data and other things, but.
I know what open data is.
But, but there's, there's a challenge in that when you're building a bike lane or a bus lane, you, ten percent of the work doesn't give you ten percent of the miles. You can't ten percent open a bus lane. It's when you finish the project, which is often at the end of the year, that we count the miles all at once. So we do our best to keep people updated where that's possible. But the reality is that most of the numbers really do come in at the end of the year.
But do you have a map, for instance, that keeps track internally that you could share with the public as to where you are with the, you know, as far as you've gone? It's something to think about. It would help the public understand that you're getting to this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Follow with you.
Thank you.
Also, it's good that the body also.
Your, your mic's not on.
So the word that we do on all those projects usually happening only during the spring and the summer.
Okay.
Because we also have limitation with the, with the environment.
And also we have a letter that the chair and I wrote and I assume you're going to be answering it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are going to have a statement and then followed by questions from Councilmember Velazquez.
Good morning, colleagues, DOT Commissioner Rodriguez, Chief Pulecki and members of the public. I want to thank Chair Brooks-Powers for hearing Bill Intro three six nine, which would require DOT to install reflective material on at least two hundred fifty bollards, curbs, posts and runabouts in each borough. Since becoming councilmember, I've had to console families devastated by preventive traffic violence. Listening to the stories this morning, I want to share my sincere condolences to families who shared theirs. Policies like Vision Zero's initiative have laid a foundation to eliminate crashes, but until twenty twenty-two, the city has experienced increases in the number of fatalities, making it clear that more must be done. My bill will make our streets safer for pedestrians and allow drivers to see pathways more clearly. In tandem with Chair Brooks-Powers's Intro eight seven nine, we can see significant new traffic infrastructure created to make our streets and sidewalks safer. It's unfortunate that so many lives have been lost, but hopefully, under the leadership of majority whip councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers and her transportation committee and our colleagues, we can implement protections so everyone feels safe on and off the road. So thank you. Beginning with questions, going back to what Councilmember Williams was talking about with the school safety program, we wanted to discuss, especially in my district, when the location of the cameras are placed, especially when the community feels like it's not really capturing all the bad actors because it's actually placed on the wrong corner. We've tried to reach out to you all. Can we have a conversation on that and separately? Because our community has better ideas and they go through it day in and day out, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then in addition to this school safety program, there is, you know, I'm taking a moment, y'all, because my district has a lot of cars and there's a lot of violence, as we have seen. And as we still mourn for the passing of a child that we lost last year, when we're talking about also safety measures, can we talk a little bit about how and why it takes so long to do these studies?
Which one do you, are you referring to?
So there was a study specifically that we had requested in the corner where a child's life was taken and it took a long time.
Okay. Julia, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, and you're talking about like a study for a traffic signal or an all-way stop?
Correct.
Right. So we, we want to make sure that we do it well. And that, and that means we want to collect the data at a time of year when the schools are open, when, when we have good weather so that it's that people are actually out and crossing the streets so that we collect the right data. We also just, we get a tremendous number of requests for these studies every year and we, we obviously prioritize them where, where a fatality or a serious injury happened. But we do get, get a very large number of these requests and we prioritize them as, as well as we can. So I, I don't think we want to say, yes, it's, it's great that it takes this amount of time. We all, we always wish it could be faster, but we want to make sure they're done well and make sure we, we get them all done. So that's, that's what we work on and we're very happy that in this recent budget, there's actually a lot more money for new traffic signals. So we, we hope that in the future, we'll, we'll see it going a little bit faster.
When you prioritize, how much time do you cut off from the AA study and then ultimate implementation?
It's, it's hard to give a precise answer because it does depend on time of year and, and weather, but you know, we, we try to move it to the top of the list, along with anything else that's also at a similar location.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Velazquez.
Thank you, Councilmember and, and Williams. And thank you so much to the Chair, Brooks-Powers, for holding this hearing today and for the opportunity to speak regarding Intro eight oh five, a bill which I introduced along with public advocate Jumania Williams, which I understand from the testimony, the administration is not in favor of. As many of you know in this room, the Department of Transportation is required to conduct traffic crash, study of traffic crashes involving a pedestrian fatality or serious injury every five years. Under Intro eight oh five, this timeline would be accelerated, requiring a study instead every three years. In Brooklyn's District Thirty-eight, which I represent, we have what DOT considers to be, I would say, four priority corridors, although that is not at all reflected on the map. Fourth Avenue, Third Avenue, a very well-known corridor of fatalities, Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue. And I have neglected to even include the corridors in Red Hook, which have been inundated by truck traffic. On these stretches, it's been determined that pedestrians are in greater danger of being killed or severely injured for walking down the street when compared to similar corridors in the borough. I know these corridors well and can tell you, looking at these landscapes, every five years is a tremendous disservice to our communities who continue to suffer from our city's lack of planning, which can and should be informed by more frequent and thorough data collection. I can't, I can't agree enough with my colleague, Councilmember Natasha Williams, around rightfully pointing out the importance of proactive approaches. And in fact, there is not a day that goes by that a neighborhood resident cannot or will, does not point out very clear places where traffic safety measures should be put into place, yet they are often not considered. From a macro perspective, I'm sorry, Chair, if I could just finish. From a macro perspective, all of our communities have experienced a massive and significant change in transportation patterns within the past few years as a result of the pandemic. And I'm sure you have all heard, I see, I see my colleague, Brooklyn Borough Commissioner here as well, who we talk a lot and has been really great. If you haven't heard me say before, in my district, we have experienced an enormous uptick in truck traffic, particularly along the Fourth and Third Avenue corridors and in Red Hook as a result of last mile deliveries. Somehow, we have ignored, looking at the impacts of what these facilities bring to our community before we cite them. And now it is the burden of proof on the residents to tell you the horrors that they experience every single day. I think the order of operations in this situation is simply wrong. It should not take fifteen years and multiple pedestrian deaths and/or injuries for us to say, oh, I think this is going to be a priority corridor, we should, we should now study. So in terms of, in Ninth Avenue in my district, another priority corridor, we've seen significant construction occurring to create a new medical facility across the street from an already heavily trafficked junior high school. And again, with the school safety, there are a good number of these locations also within our district. What does it mean for our children who are walking to school when we add construction vehicles in addition to related obstructions to an area that's already considered a bottleneck in the community? These patterns will not be able to be captured if we wait every five years to collect the data. Now, I know DOT has mentioned that it has a portal that is collecting more immediate data. But not only, we, we don't just want the immediate collection, we want the clear analysis and adjustments and mitigation measure, measures to be immediate in this regard. So we hope that we will figure out a way to have reporting done on a much shorter timeframe so that we can get the full live picture of what is happening in our communities and to be able to address it in adequate time before people are injured and get hurt. And again, more proactive planning with the community. We do visioning sessions and then things kind of disappear into the ether. And so with that, I want to thank the Chair and would love to follow up on several school corridors that we have some real issues with. And finally, getting a truck traffic study for our district, which has been a request for over twenty years. We're getting one in Sunset Park and hopefully one in Red Hook. And I'm always adamantly and eager to hear concrete timeframes and, and outreach to the community in that regard. So with that, thank you for your time. And I'd love to know, with the current portals, what, what is the feedback? How do you take resident feedback on whether or not your current collection mechanisms actually result in the things that people need? Is there a way to provide feedback, let's say, on the SERTA system, on whether or not the reports that come out actually do inform, they're being responded to? Or if residents say, you know, actually, the way these things are put out into the public realm do not help in terms of advocacy and seeing outcomes?
So more than happy to, to follow with you. And of course, like, Julia will also add other things to add to what I'm going to say. But on relation to, on regard to the bill, as you said, we feel that the reason why we, we don't think that we need to get this bill and we not support this bill is a drafter because we think that this existing crash report provide sufficient information. But we are more than happy again to get our staff to continue conversation with you on, 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 on this bill. When it comes to, you know, what are we doing to incorporate the voices of the community? I said before, this is a priority for me. I want to be sure that, for me and for Mayor Adams, he wants to be sure that all community, all New Yorkers across different socio-economic background are engaged when it comes to the presence and the future of improving transportation in the district. You know, not only, as you know, you work closely with our Borough Commissioner, but for me, I also enjoy to be able to work in your district. This is something that I'm doing, having my time to work with as many councilmembers as they want me for me to work and see directly what is important for you. So beside that, we have, we have our resources at DOT and the team from the planning perspective, from the educational, they look at the whole city of New York on how we can make the city, continue making the city the safest one in the nation. I said before, the, the data, and we are New Yorkers, eight point six million people, a hundred different million of opinions, as Mayor Adams say, but the data is showing by itself. You know, like, a, a big thing of a crash can be one of our family members, can be a colleague, can be any New Yorker's. And they come in different socio-economic background. However, we also know that when any of us go to any city to talk about transportation, the data is also showing that we have the lowest number of fatality in the whole country. So of course, one is too many for us, but I feel because of the leadership of this council, because of your commitment to invest, because of the leadership of this administration, we will continue putting your city in the front line on making us, you know, a role model when it comes to improving safety. So more than happy again to continue going back to your district and hear and listen on what is important for you in order for us to, you know, to have a temperature from your own experience about things that we can do. But Julia also can.
Sure. So with regard to analysis of the crashes and where they're happening, we announced at the very beginning today that today we're publishing our new Borough Pedestrian Safety Action Plan for Vision Zero. It's actually the third edition that we've done. The first came out in twenty fifteen, the first update was in twenty nineteen, and now we're in twenty twenty-three. So we've been delivering it on a four-year interval rather than the five. And we think that this is actually a good place in between the three that the bill suggests and the five that is currently mandated because we do need to have a certain amount of data in order to be able to run these analyses, to be able to generate those heat maps that show the hotspots, that show patterns. We look specifically at pedestrians killed and seriously injured, which when you think about, you know, spreading. about, you know, spreading across the entire city, you do need several years of data in order to be able to see these patterns. And then with the changes to our road usage and to injury and death patterns caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, we know that things became slightly unusual starting in 2020. So we think that if we continue this rolling four-year cadence, it's giving us really good, not only really good data to work with, but also enough time to be able to address those specific locations that we do highlight as priorities before we start recalculating. I can give you a copy here and it is available online, but since the start of Vision Zero, we've been able to install safety engineering improvements at 84% of the priority intersections that we designated in 2019 and 74% of the total length of the priority corridors there. So of course, once we have the data and we designate the areas that are really popping in terms of these pedestrian deaths and serious injuries, we take the time to work on them and then we take the time to collect the data on how they're performing afterward. So if we make this interval too short, it might not actually be showing us what we need it to, but of course, we don't want to make it too long because that could limit how nimble we are. So we're, we're thinking that right now, the four years that we've been able to do this have been, have been very useful for us, but I'm happy to give you this copy and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. And certainly, four years is moving in a, in a better direction, I hear you around the data. You know, I guess my immediate reaction is, living in a district with the Third Avenue corridor, it has been more than 30 years that this corridor is well-known as one that has pedestrian deaths. With the increase, significant increase of truck traffic on that corridor, we continue to see the same pattern. So I'm a bit dismayed to see from the little teeny tiny map, and maybe I can't make it out, that even Third Avenue is not considered a priority corridor here. And, and the disconnection between what is considered priorities, priority corridor and kind of use corridor, when you're introducing thousands of additional trucks, you know, where we have seen fatalities, how, how those fare. So more, certainly be happy to talk more specifically about that. But Hamilton Avenue, Commissioner, we were there together, Hamilton Avenue, there was a, there was a, there's been consistent fatalities on Hamilton Avenue, not a priority. Third Avenue, consistent fatalities every year, not a priority. So I'd love to follow up some more around those measures.
Sure. And just briefly on Third Avenue, we do know, and it was actually one of the things we flagged when we were doing the analysis, that even though we know it's a dangerous street, it, for whatever reason, in the past five-year period, did not have a lot of, of serious pedestrian injuries, but we know it's the kind of street that has had and will have again. So that's why, even though it's not identified as a priority street from that data analysis, we are undertaking a new corridor study of Third Avenue this year and are really focusing on it, in addition to the Sunset Park and in addition to the Red Hook studies, like, make sure we're really giving it the attention we know it deserves.
Great, thank you. And while there may not have been one in this year, the residents that live there can tell you the 30 individuals who have died on that corridor.
Right. We are, we are very aware, and that's why there's, there's the data, and then we have to look at it carefully to see, because there can be a dangerous street that just has had a lucky few years, that doesn't make it not a dangerous street, and it's why we do need to focus there.
Thank you. So I just want to jump back into, into the questions that I had. I wanted to allow my colleagues the opportunity to ask theirs. And I'll try to be quick because I know we have folks from the public that also have testimony that they wish to give. So will the Department of Transportation be looking to request additional funding this year to support achieving the Streets Plan benchmark goals?
We always welcome any additional resources to our agency. However, I got to say that, you know, when the Mayor added 18% increase in our budget in the middle last year, and then when he held a state-of-the-city event, he added almost 400 additional million dollars to DOT, we appreciate the support that the Mayor is providing to our agency to have the resources that we need to continue accomplishing our goal. And I also know that, you know, at the end of the day, all the investments is the Mayor together with the council, with Speaker Adams, to allow for us as an agency to have what we need in order to continue making our city the safest one in the nation.
And how much are you looking to request?
No, I'm not looking, I'm fine with the resources that we have. Any additional resources anyone may add, I always welcome it.
So you're fine with the resources you have, but also there are challenges with the resources and being implemented because the staffing is not there? Am I following it correctly?
Like, I, I, one thing that I learned in my two years, after I ended the council for two years, was that New York City had limited resources, that, you know, there's not a place where we can, there's a plan that we can take all the dollars from there, that we have limited resources in order to, for agencies to have what they need in order to do the job. So what I'm saying is that I'm comfortable with the investment that Mayor Adams has made to our agency, but this is a new budget dancing cycle that is going on, that's between the Mayor and the Speaker, and anyone that would like to add some money in additional funding to DOT, more than happy to take it.
The Department of Transportation has noted the overall decrease in traffic violence for 2022 is in large part due to the administration's new focus on pedestrian safety at intersections and the administration's work to expand the school zone speed camera enforcement program to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 33% of all fatalities and 44% of pedestrian fatalities occurred on Vision Zero priority corridors, which account for the most dangerous 7% of streets in New York City. What efforts is DOT undertaking to improve street safety at priority corridors?
And I would definitely, you know, they're pretty, they're pretty chief and will share some data on how well we are doing on reducing crashes as a result of speeding or reducing of speeding. And then Eric and I, you know, what we are doing when it comes to, you know, taking into biggest projects on transportation. I, I just feel that '23, as Mayor Adams says, is a year for the city that we will build on all the success that we had done in 2022. I shared the data with you before, you know, when back in November, I was able to stand with the Mayor around 44th Street and share how we overpassed all the expectations that we put in place at the beginning of last year. That's how we're showing that this administration is putting his money where his mouth is, is putting, is supporting, you know, agencies, in this case, myself as a commissioner, and therefore unable to work with the great team that I have at DOT to deliver, you know. Everyone is looking, like, tomorrow is the last day for the Street Design Manual exhibition. This exhibition is happening at Ford University. The difference with this, and I encourage any New Yorkers to go through it close tomorrow. In, in 2009, was the first year when the DOT put together a design, a street design manual, that's what we're using as this agency, to see how the work that we have done it and what is the future project and plan that we have. So in 2014, this body, when I was a council member, we passed a bill that instead of just letting DOT to, you know, come and say, we have this, this street design manual, then the council asked DOT, mandated DOT, to do like every four-year, you know, report of this, updated, upgraded this report. So when we opened this exhibition at Ford University, one thing that is important is that when we look at this manual in 2009, all the photo that were used in the first manual, there was photo of how New York City wanted to look like, looking at all the city. The 2020 manual, now, again, tomorrow is the last day, if anyone would like to go and see at Ford University in downtown campus, all the photo that we have right now are based on those and many other big project that we are doing, that all the city, when the, when the team at DOT, they go to LA, they go to Boston, they go to any place, Washington, DC, and they present on our behalf on transportation. When we walk in any conference, people are approaching us to hear, to learn how New York City is reimagining the use of public space. So one thing that we need to do, and we need, and we need, you know, your support, all of us together, is to change the culture on how we see a street. In the past, drivers thought that the street belonged to a driver's, and not a driver's zoo, I have a car zoo. But besides being a driver, my family having a car, now what we are doing is working all of us together to change the culture, for people to understand that the street doesn't belong to car owners only, that the street also belongs to the pedestrian, belongs to the cyclist, that when we walked at the, over the Summer Street last year, and Mayor Adams said, let's take it farther, for somewhere, up, Summer Street was only from Brooklyn Bridge to 79th Street. Last year, we went up to 109th Street. This year, I'm planning even go to the State Building in Arlington. When we do the Car Free Day, and the first time that we did it, and it came out from the council, because I led that initiative, Car Free Day was only from Union Square to 23rd Street. In 2022, we went up from Union Square to 46th Street. We touched each board, we went to Third Avenue and 149th Street. So what we are doing is changing the culture on how New Yorkers should see the street as a public space. So because if we engage everyone, then everyone will take ownership of all the project that we're doing. But when it comes to the, how we are working on reducing the speed, the deputy chief can say.
Just a very interesting piece of information about the success of DOT's School Zone Speed Camera Program. On April 6th of 2020, which was the height of the pandemic, DOT had 637 speed cameras set up throughout the city. On that date, 1.6% of the vehicles that passed those cameras did so in excess of the limit. Now, fast forward that to February 11th of 2023, DOT now has three times as many cameras, 1,927, but only 0.27% of the vehicles that passed those cameras did so in excess of the limit. So on April 6th, you can say roughly, if you round it up to two, two out of 100 vehicles went by in excess of the limit. Now, you figure one quarter of one vehicle is going by in excess of the limit, which is a really great success, because again, they're all positioned in proximity of schools and in school zones.
Thank you. And Commissioner, yes, it was good to see the expansion of the open streets. And when we talk about changing the culture, I think we also need to look at that and looking to, to bring a lot of these opportunities and resources to the outer boroughs as aggressive as we do in Manhattan, like, we can't continue to be Manhattan-centric. And I know we were able to finally bring an open streets program to Laurelton through Jay Corp. And then there are some challenges with these small businesses getting reimbursed from DOT. And it makes it challenging for organizations to want to take up and participate in this program. So while we see it being successful in Manhattan, we have to also look at what that looks like in the outer boroughs and how we can be equally as aggressive and bring in those opportunities to those communities.
Priority, Chairman, that's a priority for us. And, and again, what we need, and I know that Rick and the team of the Intergovernmental, we've been calling, emailing, calling every council member, asking to help us to identify a CBOs, a business.
I'm telling you, mine hasn't gotten paid, and now I've got a new set of.
We can follow with you, any challenge, in any particular one. I can say, in two things with this, it's also that, because I, I just use my experience as a council member. This is one thing that I did. Ottoman Avenue, and the same thing that I share with other council members, the budget cycle is starting now. You have a large numbers of institutions that they approach each council member. They are zoo, they are museum, they are the backlist, they are, you know, Carnegie Hall, they are the Lincoln Center, they are everyone. What we want is also, what I feel the only one, the way of how we can also even add more institution, Chair, is by asking those institutions that they come and ask the council for support, for them also to take the lead, to also be one of those that open or be kind of partners on the, on the, on the open street. So we are confident, again, that with the support that we are providing, more than happy to follow you with the challenges. We provide $20,000 for an institution that they don't have the resources.
I know, when they get that money, I'm sure they'll be grateful for it.
But we don't want it to, only to rely on that. I also want, you know, when I call Columbia New York Medical School, because they are in the district that I still live, and they are a big institution, I didn't call and say, you can get $20,000. I just asked the hospital about, can you be a partner with the local CBOs for you to put the resources in order to have a open street that also have a health component? So I think that by, you know, being engaged in this conversation of planning, and I'm confident that we will oversee our number of 200 that we did last year, by the support of the council member inviting all the CBOs in your district to also use the street. Different from the past, that there was a lot of red tapes, that you need to get permits through SAP or any other institution in order for you to close a block. What DOT is telling everyone is about, do you want to put an open street in place? Bring it on, and we support you.
Okay. I'm gonna try and go quickly because I have a lot of questions left for you, so I'll try to speed through this. So on October 30th, 2022, DOT announced it had completed street safety improvements at 1,400 intersections. However, most of the previously identified 293 Vision Zero priority intersections were not among the 1,400 that received improvements. What factors did not use the, did DOT use to decide which intersections would receive improvements? Why were more priority intersections not included? And has there been any decline in the number of incidents of traffic violence at those intersections which did receive improvements?
Yeah. So, so let's get Eric to get into that, into the answer, and if anything, then add it in.
Sure. And it's a good question, because we, these, you know, these Vision Zero priority locations are priority, and then you look and you see, not, not all of them were in the 1,400 or the 1,600, and there's a few reasons for that. For first, many of them had already been addressed in the previous several years, as Julia said, this is, we've been coming out with these plans every four years, so.
How many of the 293 were addressed already?
I don't have that number in front of me, but many of them. So we obviously weren't going to go back and do, do another thing again, just to make sure that we did it again. So that's, that's one lens to it. The other is that we have many ways that we approach this work as an agency. If we're doing a bike lane on a corridor, we don't do the bike lane on this block, but not the next block, and then do the next block again, just because that's where the priority intersection was. We want to redesign the whole corridor, and as we're doing that, we make safety upgrades at every intersection along the way. So even though they may not all be priority intersections in the report, we still think it's important that wherever we're doing work, we include those safety upgrades as part of our work and not just do it sort of haphazardly spread around the city. So we, it's, some of the intersections come from us looking at the, the Vision Zero priority areas specifically, but others come from wanting the connected bike network, from wanting to have bus lanes where bus speeds are slowest, and then making sure that we're including the safety improvements wherever we're redesigning an intersection citywide.
But shouldn't we be prioritizing the intersections that we know are a priority because they've shown that they have, you know, high fatalities or crashes that may happen there?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we do, and we'll get back to you on the number, but, but we, over, over the course of four years, we have addressed the vast majority, if not all, of those intersections. So we do do that, but we don't only do that. In addition to addressing those intersections, we make sure that wherever we're doing other work around the city, we're also incorporating the safety improvements.
Eighty-four, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
84% of our last tranche of Vision Zero priority intersections have had safety engineering improvements installed, and that can be anything from a street improvement project, new signals, turn calming treatments, the leading pedestrian interval, signal retiming, a very wide toolkit, of course, that we tailor to each specific location's needs. And then you did ask, you know, have we seen improvements there? And yes, actually, casualties have dropped more at the priority intersections than the citywide average, which I think reflects the, the impact and the effectiveness of our Vision Zero toolkit.
Thank you for that. And in January of 2022, Mayor Adams announced the city would install 100 raised crosswalk annually. To date, how many raised crosswalks have been installed?
So last year, we installed 45 raised crosswalks, which was a new record for the city. And we want to make sure that we're doing it sustainably. So we did about half of those through our in-house program, using our concrete and asphalt crews. The other half was incorporated into the Department of Design and Construction capital projects, and that's some. And that's something that we want to do going forward, is both increasing the amount that we do in-house, but also making sure that it becomes a standard treatment in our capital program. And we're working closely with our colleagues at DDC to make that happen.
How come it was only less than half of them that were implemented or constructed?
So what we had said was that we were going to start a program, not necessarily that we were going to achieve the 100 in the first year. And we ramped up a very large amount over what we had done. So raised crosswalks, they look simple when they're done, but they can be challenging to implement, because if the drainage of the street goes a certain way, we don't want to have a ponding condition at the end. That often means you have to install a new catch basin and deal with the underground infrastructure. So we're looking for as many places as we can where the drainage isn't a problem, and that's what we do in-house. But we also want to make sure that we're doing it at the places with the greatest number of crashes, particularly turning crashes, which raised crosswalks address very well. And those are the ones that have to go through the capital project process, coordinate with DEP, coordinate with other private utilities, and make sure that they're done correctly. And that takes a little bit of time, but it makes sure that we get the best results at the end of the day.
In June of 2022, Mayor Adams and Commissioner Rodriguez announced that 100 safe street redesigns would be completed by 2022. What is the status of these redesigns, and where can the public review the completed projects?
So last year, we did 111 street improvement programs, so those are our in-house street redesigns. So those are things that are substantial redesigns. They can include signal timing, but go beyond signal timing to involve a full redesign of the street. So we did exceed that number, and that should all be available through Open Data, but if we're happy to help you find the list.
On Vision Zero View, we have a tab that you can click along the top that looks at street improvements and engineering, and there represented, you know, in different colors and shapes. We talk about everything from leading pedestrian intervals, to street improvement projects, to corridor retimings. And then if people want more specifics, on the DOT website, we do archive presentations from every meeting that we give in each calendar year separated there. So that's another way that people can go and reference exactly what we've done where.
In terms of the speed camera expansion of ours, I think it was about $20 million, if I'm not mistaken, that's been generated through the cameras. I wanted to get a sense as to where, like, the top three communities that are, like, receiving the most violations? And then I'd also like to know, has any infrastructure projects been done underway or being planned for those neighborhoods?
So we can get back to you into the more specific of those particular location, but what I can tell is that, as I said before, I hope that one day we don't raise $1 from a speed camera. Because in order to get there, it will mean that we change the culture on how people drive. And this is something like yesterday, as I was standing with, in a room of 40 faith leaders, that Rosanne, the starting labor commissioner, put it together. You know, when one of the pastor asked me the question about, how do you feel about in which community people get a speed camera and things like that? My answer was, it is in your institution that those who lost a loved one, they go and cry with you, and you have to pray with them. So I just feel that, you know, we all, New Yorkers, should understand that, you know, first of all, no, we are not competing into, you know, which community get more ticket in the speed camera. And as you know, as I said since '83, I only been, I only been doing the work that I used to do before I left my island of the Dominican Republic that share with Haiti. But it's about, you know, being sure that, so equity for me is key. I don't want no community to be single out on this is getting more than other. What I want, as someone again, that believe that we can bring, as Mayor Adams say, to zero the numbers of pedestrian or cycling that we're losing. As Mayor Adams say, traffic violence is another type of violence that we can eradicate it. Let's work together to educate all drivers that no one will get a ticket, but they have to drive on a speed limit, which is 25 miles per hour.
With regard to the finances, over the period of fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 21, the revenue from speed cameras has been about $555 million, and that is about one-third of what we've spent on Vision Zero overall. So while we're continuing to invest the resources back where they're needed, we want to do that in a way that's really regardless of where those camera revenues have come from, just because the commitment has been so much greater than what goes in.
Thank you. And when you get, your agency gets back to me, Commissioner, it'd be great if we could just look at each of the districts. I guess it could be like a heating map that shows us where it's at, just to have a visual, that would be very much appreciated. Moving now to DOT's role in street safety, does DOT have a specific target per year on implementing traffic calming devices in the city? And if so, what is this target, and how many devices were implemented in 2022 and year to date?
We do, and Eric will get into more details.
Right. And we have targets around different, different numbers of things, like historically, our target had been 100 turn calming devices, for example. Last year, we upped that, we doubled it to a commitment of 200 turn calming locations. So we can go through individual things, but we do want to make sure we're both addressing a number of intersections and doing an appropriate number of treatments. That said, we do try to make sure that we're doing the right thing at the right place. You know, we don't do a turn calming just because we need to make our numbers. We spend a lot of effort to make sure we're doing it at the right locations where turn calming really addresses the types of crashes that we see.
Thank you. But in terms of the, so there is no actual targeted number or goal at all set?
Well, we target 200 turn calming locations. You know, the official target is, that was reported in the MMRs, is 50 street design, redesigned projects per year. As the Commissioner said, we did more than 100. So we do have a lot of internal targets that we use for things. We don't roll it all into a single number, because sometimes you have multiple treatments at a single intersection. But, you know, we committed to doing over 1,000 intersection redesigns, which I think is probably the best combination of all of these different treatments. And in reality, we did over 1,600 last year.
What has been the most influential traffic calming measure in the city for reducing total fatalities and injuries?
I think it's a combination of all the tools that we have in a toolbox, but Julia will get into more details.
Yes. So like I said earlier to one of your colleagues, we never say that there's one, you know, silver bullet that's going to solve all our problems. But I think that if we look at the Safe Systems approach in general, we see a common theme, and that's speed management. Anything we can do that addresses speed management is likely to have a positive impact, and we have a lot of different interventions that speak to that. It's not just the lowering the speed limit, it's not just enforcing it through both NYPD and through cameras, it's also everything else that we do on our streets, anything from narrowing a lane to putting in a protected bike lane to doing turn calming. All these things have in common is that they slow down motor vehicle traffic. And as I believe one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, when you're traveling slower, you have a longer distance, it's a shorter distance that you need if you see something and you need to react quickly, both to get the stimulus into your brain, hit the brake, and actually come to a stop. You're going to travel a lot slower distance, and then even if a crash does happen, the impact on the other person is going to be a lot less severe. We've been saying since the beginning of Vision Zero, the reason why we lowered the speed limit from 30 to 25 might not sound like very much, but it doubles the chance of pedestrian survival. It's these, all these elements working together to overall calm down traffic, increase people's visibility and reaction time, and even if a crash does happen, it doesn't have to be fatal. That's why we always focus on death and serious injury, and not, you know, a property damage crash or fender bender, because we know what's important here. And again and again, what we come down to is speed management is one of our most important factors.
No, I agree with that. I do think that, you know, we have to improve the way our roads are designed, which I think will influence the way motorists will drive on the roadway. And I would love to see more emphasis on that. When you look at other states across the United States, there are places that have, you know, less crashes, and they have, like, there are parts of like Florida, for example, where they have more roundabouts. And I think there's some studies that support that roundabout sometimes may reduce vehicle crashes. Also, you know, so I say this to say that it is not only the speed limit or, you know, a traffic camera, but it's also making sure the road support the outcome we're looking for. So there's a street still on 225th, and I know my borough Commissioner is here, Nicole, on 225th, you still, like, there's still this stretch of road with no traffic, like, no stop sign, no speed hump. There's a daycare, so I was glad one of my colleagues mentioned earlier about daycare is being considered like schools as well. And we have cars flying down that road, because there's nothing that's there to make the motorists think to slow down. It's just a straight stretch of roadway. And so that is important.
And also, it means also, Chair, that, you know, everyone, and I feel that, you know, like, with your leadership and others, you know, at the council and all together, we also had to also work with the private sector to be sure that everyone took their part. Because even let's say the case of the child that we went there to saw, that driver was coming out from a parking garage. You know, that was not, you know, a thing related to our street redesigning, that was about, you know, that the person who, that driver was coming out from that parking. But I just feel that, you know, that's why Vision Zero is so important, because Vision Zero combined the three aspects of engineering. Yes, we don't have to wait for Albany or anybody else to pass any law for us to redesign the street. We doing the work, and a lot of state, they look at New York City as a role model of the work that we're doing. But also, that's combined with enforcement. And that's why we work shoulder to shoulder with the NYPD to be sure that, you know, 2022, we saw stepping or enforcement. There was more police presence. You know, I went to the one police class, and I saw Chief Royster and the Chief here, you know, meeting with all the inspector that they do, you know, per borough. And this is something, if you want to share, how you also work in the inspector, to be sure that they do the enforcement part, and then we do the educational part. And education is so important also, to change the culture. You know, we, every time when we think about any transportation project in certain community, we hit a big roll, because then sometime we have the car drivers culture, which is about, don't touch, let us drive, you know, at any speed limit. And as, you know, we have said, the data speak by itself, 25 miles save life.
You know, the Commissioner had once said a while back that intersections should be considered sacred spaces. I remember you had said that. And when we do our analysis on pedestrian collisions and other collisions, bicycle collisions, for example, in 2022, there were 8,567 pedestrian collisions throughout the city. 54.70 or 63% of those pedestrians that were struck, were struck in intersections, and that number has gone up this year. We've had 711 pedestrian collisions so far this year. 502 or 71% occurred in intersections. So as the Commissioner had mentioned, at our Traffic Safety Forum meetings, we discussed this with our captains, and we encourage them to direct their enforcement in intersections with summonses such as failure to yield the right of way to a pedestrian, or failure to stop at a red light, or disobeying a sign. These are all things that will help make those intersections safer, along with the engineering that DOT has conducted in the past and continues to implement.
Thank you for that. How widely used is daylighting within DOT's toolbox to reduce traffic fatalities and injuries?
Since he also oversee again that part of the planning that we do, but we did hundreds of those in 2022. But as I say in my testimony, it's not only about to remove some parking spot, it must happen when we do, when we do those work, it's about losing around eight to twelve parking spots in those intersection, but it's more than removing that. It also require other work, and Eric can explain about what are those.
Sure. And last year, we did a little over 100 locations, but as the Commissioner said, it's a tool in our toolbox, but one we use very carefully, because one of the things that we found very successful in reducing crashes and fatalities is encouraging drivers to turn very slowly. And that's both a big focus of our educational campaigns, but even just in our redesign work, a lot of the work we do is around tightening the radius at a corner so that a driver physically has to turn slowly. As you say, it's not just education, but having the street design really enforce what we want people to do. We have a concern that if you just daylight in sort of the lightest touch way by, you know, creating a no standing zone at the corner, it has the unfortunate effect of widening the turn radius, that people can actually take the turn much faster. And so when we implement daylighting, yeah, at least where there's a turn allowed, we try to make sure we're putting something in that space, you know, a turn calming, a bike corral, something that physically occupies the space so that the turn is still one you have to take slowly. So it's a tool we use, we think it can be very effective in the right circumstances, but it's not the tool we use at every dangerous intersection. We want to use it in the right places and in the right ways.
So if you did a little over 100 last year, you said that it has been effective. What's the opposition to my bill that calls for 100?
We just want to add the flexibility on when and where we use it. As we know, we also do the pedestrian island, we also do the raised crosswalk, so those are things that we do, and we're more than happy to continue the conversation with you.
Actually, I feel like maybe we should increase it, because if you're already doing a little over 100, we could really be impactful by speeding that process up. I find that, like, when you go into even Long Island, you have a lot of those roads that do have the daylighting. Also, I do agree in terms of the infrastructure needed to tighten up the turn, but right now, a lot of people are driving, like, bigger vehicles, right? And at the corners, you have these vans or trucks or buses, and it really makes it difficult to turn, and it impairs the drivers to some extent. So I do think that's something that we should discuss, and looking forward for the council to passing a bill around that in partnership with DOT, recognizing, like, the infrastructure is important so that we can really start to address the road design to make the streets safer.
More than happy to continue conversation with you. Again, we believe that it's much better if we don't have to put a number for DOT to keep the flexibility, but of course, like, you know, we will continue conversation with you.
And then by the end of 2017, DOT plans to modify signal timing to reduce off-peak speeding on all feasible priority corridors by the end of 2017. Which and how many streets have adjusted signal timing according to this goal?
So we can get you the full list, but we didn't meet that commitment, where we evaluated all of our Vision Zero priority corridors and looked at, you know, we look at signal timing in many different ways, but in particularly, we looked at the off-peak times when, you know, you have a street that's very busy during rush hour but can feel very open at other times of day, and we use signal timing to sort of create a much tighter pack of cars, so that it's much harder to speed on those roads overnight. So we did do that, we thought it was a very effective treatment. As we've come out with our new Vision Zero corridors, any of them that doesn't have that treatment, we will look again as well.
$1.3 million is budgeted for a new 29-person team at DOT. Commissioner, you were still in the council, I think, when we did that, to analyze crashes and answer press questions as part of an effort to avoid NYPD driver bias. How many of these roles have been hired to date, and what is the status of DOT's analysis team?
Sure. And this is the Serta team that the Commissioner mentioned in his testimony, where in addition to our colleagues at NYPD, we both have an emergency response unit that goes out and visits the scene of the crash. visits the scene of the crash. So that as NYPD is studying criminality and other things in their jurisdiction, we are looking at street design, missing signs, anything that we should be fixing immediately. And then in addition to the immediate reaction, we have then a investigatory team that looks at the data, looks at whether there's a history of similar crashes at the location, and makes recommendations for anything either short term or long term that we should do. So we have been staffing up that team, you know, as with other things. I won't say that we're fully staffed for all those positions, but we have staffed it up substantially over the past year, and we have been putting out the quarterly reports.
How many do you have out of the 29?
I think I have to get back to you on the exact number, but we have been putting out the required quarterly reports that have been looked at all the intersections.
I might be like Councilmember Russell. I may find some people to go in those positions. Send me the job posters. I'll put it in my e-newsletter.
Please.
And I'm sure the other councilmembers will too.
Thank you.
That's important for me, as a lead prime on that bill. So I also know, you know, now as a commissioner, you know, I live to be accountable, but I'm confident that the work that we're doing at DOT definitely fulfill what we mandate the agency to do with that bill.
Yeah, no, I was definitely interested in how that was gonna play out, because there are two motor vehicle crashes that I know of that were in southeast Queens, and I don't recall ever seeing anyone from DOT coming. There's some challenges in itself now because DOT not coming and NYPD not coming and relying on two drivers to be truthful with insurance. What I've found, and I'm starting to pay attention as people tell me about these things, is that the insurance company will often just say it's like 50/50, and that's it. So everybody has liability, but that may not necessarily be the case if someone would have gone there and assessed or whatever also. So that dynamic is something to probably, you know, discuss at another time. But I did wanna...
Chair, you just reached on the, in the bill, the DOT is sending their team to the scene together with NYPD when there is a fatal crash or there's one in critical injury condition. And when it comes to, you know, NYPD can respond, you know, we respond by themselves, but I can say that, you know, it could be, I don't know about this scenario, that particular crash, as you say, but if two drivers get into a crash and they don't call the police and they resolve by themselves?
No, they have. This was in, actually, Councilmember Williams's district.
Are you talking about the department's policy that was changed a few years back where we wouldn't respond to collisions where there was no injury?
Right. Actually, I will say the 105, it was in Councilmember Williams's district. The 105 did respond to it, but again, like, they, there was another situation, I forgot whose district that one was in, but it was also in Queens. And the police just, when you call the precincts, said to exchange information, they asked, you know, is anyone injured? No. And I could get more details on it.
What you're saying is there's no investigation conducted at the scene to determine possible fault. We'll take it back.
Yeah. And the report that was released today, while DOT has been able to reach a number of the targeted goals for 2022, I did want to touch on the bus stop upgrades, especially thinking about Councilmember Farias's district from my transportation infrastructure tour last year, where most of the bus stops there, I would say, have no shelter. And so I just wanted to know what the challenges have been, because it's a pretty steep gap from the goal. Like, it was only 14 that have been completed. And what boroughs were those completed in?
Right. And the goal there is, requires 500 bus stops per year with real-time information upgrades and either a new shelter or a new bench at the location. And the biggest obstacle for us has been the real-time information. We had had a program over several years where we installed the electronic countdown clocks that say how far away the next bus is. And the equipment we had was very expensive. They were costing more than $50,000 per location.
Sounds like a budget ask, if you had enough.
And we did get a lot of rezaway money over the years, but ultimately, that was a very expensive product for what we were delivering. And the main driver of that cost was the need to trench underground to bring electricity to the sites. So we decided to take a step back and looked at some global best practices. And what's happened over the past several years is as solar technology has gotten better, there are more companies that are providing solar solutions, which don't require all that underground work to bring the power to the site. So we decided it made sense to take a step back, do a new procurement for a solar screen that we could install. And that's something that, you know, we're still finishing up the procurement, but it will be substantially cheaper and allow us to install in many more locations for the same amount of money. So we're, we think we're doing the right thing there, even though acknowledging that it meant that we were short of that goal for last year.
Yeah, because I remember when we were doing a tour, there was an elderly man just like sitting on the ground, leaned up against, I think it was like a wall or a gate or something, waiting for the bus. And then a few blocks down, there was another person leaning on a hydrant, waiting for a bus, because there was nowhere to sit down. And it was hot, because it was the summer. And the person was like this, because again, there's no shelter. And when you think about the community that Councilmember Farias represents, you know, it just shows that, again, the gap in resources. And so I wanted to highlight that. And then I'm in the final section now, and then we're gonna go to, and I thank the public for being with me, but these are important questions. I just want to ask a few questions around Intro 879. So as currently structured, Intro 879 would require the creation of guidelines for the installation of bollards at sidewalks, curb extensions, and pedestrian ramps. How does DOT currently make determinations about where to install the bollards? And does DOT have written guidelines that guide determination about the installation of bollards? And has DOT set goals for future bollard installation?
I had a similar bill when I used to be a council member and the chairman of this committee of transportation.
I may have already.
And what we feel is that, of course, the installation of the pedestrian bollards is something that we do in collaboration, the feedback of the NYPD counterterrorism too. So the bollards are one of the tools that can be used, because bollards are complicated and expensive to install. We are concerned that tiny bollard installation to the, it's all their critical safety and accessibility work will slow down and prevent that work from happening. So what we feel is that, more than happy again to continue the conversation with you, but we believe that we should not put in numbers on the pedestrian bollards. We feel that it is important for the agency to continue having the flexibility to working with the feedback of the NYPD to decide when and where pedestrian bollard is needed.
So for the last two parts of that, does DOT have written guidelines? And do you have set goals for future installation?
Location for security-rated bollards that are designated to stop vehicle must be chosen with the almost care and the input from the security expert. And I defer to my colleague here, the NYPD deputy chief, to answer that question.
Could you just repeat it for me, please?
So does DOT have written guidelines that guide determination about installation of bollards? And has DOT set goals for future bollard installation?
Beg your pardon, the commissioner had referenced that he makes these determinations in conjunction with our counterterrorism bureau. I cannot speak for the counterterrorism bureau at this point, but we can certainly get the information back or the question, and we could try to answer it as best we can for you. Generally, they're security installations that they're concerned with, not so much, you know, making individual intersections safe, the high-profile locations that the bureau determines need to be enhanced with regard to security, physical barriers, and so forth.
Okay. The bill would, in this, again, Intro 879, would require DOT to install bollards as the DOT makes accessibility-related repairs. In 2019, a judge approved a settlement requiring the city to survey its sidewalk and curbs and upgrade street corners to ensure citywide accessibility. What progress has the city made pursuant to this settlement? How much of the city has been surveyed?
Thank you for the question. I know that that's an area that we actually focus on very, very closely. We are currently pretty positive that we're in compliance with the latest targets, but again, that's a super resource-intensive effort. And so anything that, you know, interacts with that, we have to take a very hard look at the rate of installation we're required to maintain a certain pace.
So what's the target?
Offhand, I don't know. I would have to...
So you'll get that back to us?
...for pedestrian ramps.
So you'll get back to us?
Of course, of course.
How many upgrades have been made already per the settlement? You don't know that yet either, right? You'll get back on that. I'd like to know how many remain also when you get that information. And how long...
Just a point of clarification, it's an ongoing renewing commitment. So it's in perpetuity.
Okay. How long do you think that the upgrades in terms of the goals will take?
We'd be happy to follow up with you.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Farias, you had another question?
Thank you. Just one. And I'm sorry to bring us back to initially what I was speaking about, but if we can just entertain this last question for me. DOT cut hours on and in 2022 that are all in majority non-white neighborhoods, which means today, those living within a quarter of a mile of 24/7 busways are 10% below poverty level and 34% are people of color, while part-time busways, 16% live below poverty level and 80% are people of color. What is DOT's reasoning for reducing bus lane access in neighborhoods where a higher percentage of people depends on the bus to commute and for daily activities?
I'm gonna start and Eric is gonna be adding all the information, but I can say that working together with the MTA, you know, that combine the whole operation, you know, we do the bus lane, maybe MTA is the one who run the buses. You know, for all to connect all New Yorkers to the best bus services to run the buses on time is a priority for all, but so the piece related to the operation is on the MTA. What we do is we build the infrastructure.
Yeah. And in terms of the hours, we know that every street in the city is a little bit different, and buses often run on the most important streets in a community. And we do work very closely with every individual community to try to find the right balance of bus lane hours versus driving or parking. And so we do end up in different places, but it's very much based on that local community conversation. So if there's, we're happy to take another look if there's any place where it feels like we're not getting that balance quite right.
Sure. And do, we happen to know, like, off of top of mind, if any of the, like, busway redesign conversations that happened and that went into play have dictated some of the reason why some of this occurred? Or like, for example, like, I know, I've requested a review on a couple of stops, and we gained two stops recently back on our busway because of the response in the community. But do we know if that has dictated or shifted any of any of this?
I mean, we work very closely with the MTA on their borough redesigns, and, you know, they, we put up the signs, but they ultimately decide where the stops go. But I, so I don't want to speak on their behalf in terms of the bus stops, but I do know that both we and they work very closely with local communities, and it absolutely affects how we make some of these decisions. And it should in a lot of ways. So we spend a lot of effort to try to make sure we're talking to and hearing from every community that we work in. And I think we do a good job, but sometimes we miss something, and that's where we, our commitment is to go back and take another look any place we need to.
Great. Thank you. I'll make sure to follow up with MTA.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as we are leaving, I want to let the public know that we will let members of our team to stay here so that they hear directly what the public section will speak about.
Thank you. Thanks. And I'm just gonna swear you in, so if you could raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Okay, you may begin.
On behalf of the NYC Controller's Office, thank you to the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure and to Chair Brooks Powers for convening today's hearing and for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of New York City Controller Brad Lander. My name is Sindhu Baradwaj, and I am the Senior Policy Analyst for Transportation and Infrastructure in the New York City Controller's Office. Traffic fatalities rose sharply after 2018, the safest year since the city first adopted Vision Zero, and more than 250 people lost their lives in traffic crashes in 2022. New York City must reclaim progress made under Vision Zero to reverse the recent surge of traffic violence. And this is achievable by recommitting to the ambitious street design goals of the New York City Streets Master Plan, holding reckless drivers accountable and making the municipal fleet into a model for vehicle safety and safe driving. Street design remains among our most powerful tools for preventing crashes and saving lives, but progress around redesigning streets for safety and multimodal transportation has slowed. The New York City Streets Master Plan, adopted by the council and embraced by the prior and current administrations, is the city's blueprint for transforming our streets into safe places to travel regardless of mode. Unfortunately, DOT did not meet its targets under the plan in 2022, and the current and projected pace of project implementation is slower than it was in recent years. With annual targets for bike and bus lane installation set to increase this year, it is essential to speed up the pace of implementation by adding capacity at DOT, filling longstanding staff vacancies at the agency, and resolving longstanding procurement challenges to delivering capital projects more efficiently. An improvement to street design must be complemented by a new restorative, data-driven framework to hold reckless drivers accountable. New York City's successful automated enforcement program has shed light on the scale of reckless driving occurring in the city. In 2022, over 20,000 drivers received 15 or more camera-issued speeding tickets, with some individuals accumulating hundreds of violations. And although these drivers represent less than 1% of the population of drivers on city streets, they are disproportionately likely to cause crashes and endanger the lives of other road users. To begin to hold recidivist reckless drivers accountable, Controller Lander led the effort to pass the Reckless Driver Accountability Act, adopted by the council as the Dangerous Vehicle Abatement Program, or DVAP. Unfortunately, the first year of the program was smaller in scale and scope than originally conceived. Out of the 16,000 vehicles that received enough violations to qualify for the program as of November 2022, notices were sent to only 1,080 drivers. 437 of these drivers never enrolled in the required safe driving course, and only 12 faced the program's ultimate consequence of having their vehicle impounded. Our office appreciates that there are considerable administrative challenges around implementing this program, including limited capacity at DOT to prepare cases and difficulty on the part of the New York City Sheriff's Office locating vehicles if a warrant is issued. We're looking forward to DOT's report on the outcomes of the pilot phase of DVAP due in July of this year, which the council can use to adjust and extend the program, which would otherwise sunset in October of 2023. Beyond revising and scaling up DVAP, the city has an opportunity to utilize this moment to adopt... city has an opportunity to utilize this moment to adopt a far more comprehensive approach to reckless driving and impose an escalating series of consequences if they failed, if drivers fail to change their behavior, ultimately resulting in license suspension and vehicle booting or impoundment. This would, of course, require changes to state law, some of which the Adams Administration is seeking as part of its roads legislative package, along with increased agency capacity. An Intro 415-
Just wrap it up. We do have it on record, though, the submission.
I just wanted to mention that our office also released a report titled Reckless Spending yesterday, analyzing trends in claims settled by the city for incidents where city-owned vehicles caused fatalities or injuries, and that cost $653 million to the city over 10 years. So we'd like to reemphasize a combination of implementing safe street design, holding reckless drivers accountable, and making the city fleet safer as a strategy for saving lives in the city. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to public testimony. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. For panelists testifying in person, please come to the dais as your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. And for panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. We'd like to now welcome Nick Ross, Elizabeth Adams, And we can begin with Nick Ross when you're ready.
Thank you to Transportation Chair Brooks Powers. It's vital to have these kinds of hearings. My name is Nick Ross and I'm a member of Families for Safe Streets. I am here because last July, my girlfriend, Carling Mott, was hit and killed while riding her bike on the streets of New York City on the Upper East Side. She was doing everything right, but she was riding on a street that was not designed with the safety of vulnerable road users in mind. Carling was the light of my life and a light to anyone who knew her. Countless coworkers, friends, and family members' lives were changed just by knowing her. The outpouring of love and support I've seen from so many who knew her is a testament to the way she loved, cared for, and every day made people better just by the good fortune they had to know her. And now, senselessly, she's no longer with us. Carling was one of 255 people killed last year in traffic crashes. This number is appalling. There's good legislation proposed here today, and I applaud the sponsors of these bills for their leadership. However, I want to reiterate the calls of other FSS members. We need much faster and more consistent implementation of safe streets designs. We cannot let petty politics and squabbling over parking spaces delay safe streets any longer. As an example, we know we still need crosstown-protected bike lanes connecting the Upper West and East Side, but even having a conversation around the issue has been delayed by the Community Board on the West Side since last fall. In fact, the very meeting where it was finally supposed to be discussed this evening was postponed yet again. Why are we letting these delays happen, particularly when it is leading to New York City failing to reach its streets plan mandates? Carling and I loved our great city. We talked often about our future together, of getting married, having children someday, children we hope to raise in New York. As it stands today, I couldn't imagine a world where I'd let one of my children bike on the street infrastructure we have today, and it doesn't have to be this way. We know how to make our streets safer. It's curb extensions, protected bike lanes, longer light timing for pedestrians. We need interconnected networks of safe streets. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to do what we know already works. Thank you for the opportunity to share Carling's story here today, and I look forward to the future where we can prevent tragedies like these from happening to any more New Yorkers.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Chair Brooks Powers and the member of the committee for holding this important hearing on Vision Zero today. I am Elizabeth Adams, Senior Director for Advocacy and Organizing at Transportation Alternatives. We believe that our streets belong to the people of New York City, and we work with New Yorkers in every borough to build a future that rises to the needs of our communities. I want to respond to a few things that have been said today at today's hearing. First, the Streets Plan was enacted and signed into law, and it is incumbent on the administration to implement it fully. And so the failure to meet requirements around bike lanes or on bus lanes and even bus stop upgrades is extremely concerning to us. The plan also requires that underserved communities are prioritized for projects, and that can and must be forefronted in the city's work going forward. There are annual metrics for a reason, because we know that when it comes to Vision Zero, infrastructure saves lives. Street design that is proactive and preventive keeps all of us safe. And the delays highlighted here today are costing people's lives. We need to move past individual responsibility to structural changes, so that no matter your zip code, or your income, or your race, you have access to safe streets, to mobility access, and to high-quality transportation. And for far too long in New York City, that has not been the case. I appreciate the chair's focus on infrastructure and the fact that we need to move forward projects on our streets now. We're particularly concerned that projects that have stalled or not been completed. And for us to get to our 2023 metrics and requirements, we need to move forward projects still from 2022. We know the numbers. We know that too many New Yorkers' lives are at stake, as you've heard here today. As you have heard from families, we cannot wait, and every day that we do, we lose another person's loved one. We also appreciate the call to center equity in street design. There are projects like Adam Clayton Powell, Phase Five of Queens Boulevard, Central Brooklyn, where we know that there has been underinvestment for far too long, and we look forward to working with city leaders here to help move those projects forward immediately. With regard to today's legislation, we support the council's efforts to address street safety needs, and we've included recommendations and support in our longer testimony submitted, which, you know, we would love to talk further about. Disparities in street safe streets access are unacceptable. Vision Zero must mean Vision Zero for all New Yorkers, and we must prioritize investments that advance mobility justice. Thank you to everyone here today. We look forward to working together.
Thank you. And Elizabeth, are there specific adjustments to the bills that you have recommendations for? If you could provide it to the committee staff, that'd be helpful.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. And I'll just note, it's my first time back in the chamber since March 9th of 2000, and I am very happy to be back here in person. The critical importance of designing safety features and my name is Eric McClure. I am the Executive Director of Streets PAC. The critical importance of designing safety features into New York City streets was underscored by the horrific events in Brooklyn yesterday, in which the driver of a rented U-Haul truck, by all appearances, intentionally ran down several people in what can only be described as an act of terrorism. It's impossible to say if specific pieces of infrastructure could have prevented or reduced any of yesterday's injuries or the death that was incurred. But we know that design interventions work, and we must make the commitment as a city and as a society to invest in the safety of our fellow New Yorkers, especially those not wrapped in a couple tons of steel. We know this committee intends to soon hold a hearing on enforcement strategies, but we must also understand that we can't enforce our way to Vision Zero. Therefore, it's crucial that we use design to slow drivers down, improve visibility, enforce slower turns at intersections with daylighting, curb extensions, and raised crosswalks, and so much more. These efforts should be data-driven, with a focus on the streets and intersections with the highest incidences of crashes, injuries, and deaths, but should also account for historical inequities in investment in safe street designs. New York City's Streets Plan gets a lot of this right, and we must make sure that the Department of Transportation has the tools and funding it needs to execute the Streets Plan and meet its important benchmarks in a timely manner. We need to push forward with building complete streets that allocate safe, separated spaces for people on foot and bikes, prioritizing transit to make it easier for people to leave cards at home or not have a car at all. We also need to think about how we can use design inside vehicles to improve safety outside of vehicles. The city's initial intelligent speed assistance pilot program has been a tremendous success, achieving 99% compliance with speed limits, and NYC DOT has won a federal grant to expand ISA to an additional 7,500 vehicles. Is there a legislative solution to requiring ISA in private cars? Is there a way the city can regulate the exploding growth in the size and power of SUVs? Or the proliferation of electronic distractions inside cars? What about adopting London's direct vision standards for trucks? These are all things that this committee and the city council should explore. Finally, we believe that all the legislation being considered today is well-intentioned, and we prefer the DOT be able to focus, but we would prefer the DOT be able to focus on doing things rather than creating reports on things for which we largely know the answers. We do, however, want to note our support for three items on the agenda today. We support Intro 854, requiring daylighting of minimum of a minimum of 100 intersections per year. We support Intro 879, which would require the city to install bollards at intersections throughout the city undergoing reconstruction for accessibility. And we also support Resolution 441, calling on Albany to pass and enact legislation that would allow the city to set a five mile an hour, five mile per hour speed limit on open streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the other bills, do you have feedback on them at all, or were you just focused on these particular ones?
We focused on these three. As I mentioned, we believe the bills are well-intentioned, but they seem to kind of work around the periphery and not really get at the heart of the matter. So in the interest of time and emphasis, we wanted to note these bills and the resolution is the things we very strongly support today.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Brooks Powers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Amanda Berman. I am the Deputy Director of Regional Programs with the Center for Justice Innovation. For the past 25 years, we have been working with communities and justice systems to advance equity, increase safety, and empower communities. And we recognize that safety is about much more than the absence of crime. It is the presence of investment, opportunities, and resources that allow communities to thrive, and safer streets are a necessary component of that. In 2015, we partnered with Families for Safe Streets and Transportation Alternatives, whom I sit beside today, to craft an intervention that would hold reckless drivers accountable on lower-level vehicular offenses coming through New York City's criminal courts. Historically, these cases were resolved with fines, fees, or short-term incarceration, punitive outcomes that fall disproportionately on low-income, black and brown New Yorkers, perpetuating the very harms and inequities that we work so hard to undo. Leveraging our experience and footprint in the court system, we were able to launch the Driver Accountability Program, which provides a meaningful, proportionate, and equitable response to offenses such as reckless driving, driving on a suspended license, failure to yield, leaving the scene, and more. Thanks to the support from city council, the program has grown and now operates in all five boroughs. We served over 1,000 drivers alone last year. An evaluation that we published last year also found that the program was successful in engaging drivers in meaningful self-reflection and changing their beliefs and behaviors on the road. The Driver Accountability Program represented an important step toward rethinking our justice system's involvement and response to dangerous driving and vehicular violence. Last year, we took this one step further by piloting an expansion of the model to address crashes that resulted in serious injury and fatality. This expansion, that we call Circles for Safe Streets, uses a restorative justice model to bring together drivers and their victims for a process of accountability and healing. The program addresses a critical gap in the system's response to these cases, which had previously left victims and surviving family members feeling unheard and their needs being unmet. Through this process, they have an opportunity to tell the driver about the impact of their actions and to listen to the driver as they apologize and take accountability for the harm. Sadly, the need for responses such as this only continues to grow. I know I'm out of time, so I'm just going to wrap up quickly, if that's okay. We wholeheartedly support the city's efforts under Vision Zero, including investments in infrastructure that are so critical. We look forward to a day when interventions like ours are no longer needed because the goal of Vision Zero has been realized. But until that day comes, we must also continue to invest in effective, equitable, and meaningful justice system responses that center the voices of those who have been harmed. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll next call up Sarah Lind, Jackson Chabot, and Carl Mahaney. Carl left. Okay, that's what I thought. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Brooks Powers, for hosting this important hearing. My name is Sarah Lind. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at Open Plans. Well, we appreciate the hearing today. We believe a lot more needs to be done to truly make our streets safe, as I know you know. We support Intro 584 because we know that daylighting is a critical safety improvement. However, as we heard from DOT earlier, we also know that with the city's culture of drivers parking wherever they please, daylight spots are likely to become parking spots without enforcement. Self-enforcing streets are best. Hardening daylighting with things like bollards, boulders, bike racks, or planters would ensure that vehicles cannot park there. Intro 501 would allow civilians to help do the enforcement that we know NYPD is not doing. But even better, more objective, and so reliable that it would create a culture shift, would be automated enforcement. Two bills at the state level, to give NYC Home Rule for Automated Enforcement of Bike Lanes and Bus Lanes, would dramatically increase street safety. This council should pass Home Rule resolutions, supporting both of those bills, and automated enforcement at the curb more generally. For example, so many of the trucks that are double parked on our streets, creating dangerous conditions, do so because there are not enough loading zones, and the ones we have are so often blocked by illegally parked cars that they may as well not exist. Automated enforcement would help regulate these spots and reduce double parking. Additionally, while we support Intro 441, what we desperately need is a Home Rule resolution to support Sammy's Law, which would allow New York City to lower its speed limit to 20 miles per hour and would also allow lowering the speed limit to five miles per hour on open streets. Finally, I want to touch on electric vehicles. They are a greenwashing of the car industry that utterly erases the safety impacts. Electric vehicles, especially the bigger and bigger vehicles we see on our streets, are heavier, they accelerate more quickly, and they're quieter, so people don't hear them coming, all of which creates especially dangerous conditions for pedestrians and other road users. The only way we can truly make cars safer and greener is to get them off our streets. New York must do all we can to reduce car dependency, to reduce driving, and to provide New Yorkers with better alternatives. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackson Chabot. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Organizing at Open Plans. Sarah's colleague. This conversation is not abstract, nor pie in the sky. The reality is that an overwhelming majority of our streets and sidewalks are neither safe nor livable at the moment. This year thus far, in addition to what happened yesterday, we've lost two people biking, five people walking, and nine people in vehicles, including 62-year-old Tamara Chuchi Kau in Astoria, Sarah Schick, a 37-year-old mother of two in Gowanus, and Young Kwan, an 84-year-old who author Justin Davison said was killed for being too small and walking too slowly. I also want to recognize our Families for Safe Streets members in the rooms and the members, the family members that they've lost as well. So I'm here today to remember the lives that we've lost and reiterate that we have an ongoing traffic violence epidemic that has largely shrugged off. We need urgency. If there's anything that we take away from today, we need urgency from a policy perspective, from a street redesign perspective. Elected officials, although we have none others in the room, thank you, Chair, for being here. We need to lead these tough conversations, including reallocating curb space dedicated presently to parking to ensure crossing the street, nor biking, nor other activities are life-or-death activity. So I urge electeds, please champion street redesigns, including protected bike lanes, bus lanes, and curbside reform locally in your districts, at community boards, at town halls, wherever it takes. Please hear and pass Intro 417. It has 39 sponsors, and it will improve safety improvements everywhere across the city. To the Department of Transportation, please think big and futuristically, expanding summer streets to Brooklyn and Queens this year. Encourage and promote micro-mobility by implementing two-way, wider mobility lanes for bikes, scooters, and more, as we see them across the city. As councilmembers have pointed out, we need the South Outer Roadway now. There is blood literally on the bridge because we are not expanding it. And so I'll conclude there, but just reiterating, we need urgency. I was in Albany with Kayla Santiago's mother in, who died last October near Prospect Park. Her mother was there with her two other sisters, and she showed me the pictures of her two infant children that will literally never know their mother because she was crushed by a tractor-trailer driver that should not have been there in the first place. We wait too long to make changes where all of these deaths are preventable. So please, we need urgency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now move on to those who are on- And we'll now move on to those who are on Zoom. We'll begin with Jeffrey Huber.
You may begin.
Hello, Jeffrey. I was trying to get in contact with you prior to the hearing. It looks like there's no mic set up for you. We can't hear you.
We can move to the next person and come back to Jeffrey. We'll go now to Patrick Johnson.
You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Thank you. You know, I've been listening to this thing for hours now. I just, you know, I don't know what's going on, but Vision Zero started in 2014 with the goal of zero traffic deaths and injuries by 2024. You're nowhere even close to that number. You keep hearing from me saying people from transportation alternatives and Families for Safe Streets, no problem. While I feel for their loss of their family members and people who lose somebody in traffic violence, but when the truth is being, we're being lied to, because in the police report for, I mean, I hate to talk about Amy, who lost her son Sammy, but the kid ran into the ball, ran into the street to chase his ball. She said it was because of a reckless driver. The driver was not charged, okay? So let's just get that straight. I mean, I feel bad. Listen, this is terrible to lose a life. It's terrible. But now you talk about Vision Zero. New York City DOT and New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission do absolutely nothing about people driving with suction cup cellphone mounts on their windshield. You're talking about a six-inch by three-and-a-half-inch device on the windshield obstructing view. New York City DOT does nothing about handicap tags hanging on a mirror, when it clearly says on the handicap tags that people drive with, "Do not drive with this thing on your mirror." Okay, so you can't, these people cannot see obstructions in the road, they can't see people coming off of sidewalks, okay? I see, I already see, not transportation alternatives, yeah, maybe they're, they're sharing about how daylighting is very good in Hoboken. There isn't many outdoor dining shacks in Hoboken, when they're all over the city and on corners, blocking stop signs, blocking crosswalks, blocking sightlines. I mean, just look at the Taxi and Limousine Commission. When you go outside today, when you look at the cars, look how many of them are driving with handicap tags, air fresheners, and cellphones, and iPads mounted on their windshield obstructing view. Let's talk about window tints. Window tints are illegal, okay? Go by any police precinct, or drive around any neighborhood, you'll see millions of cars with tints. So don't get me started on that, all right? I like that everybody left this hearing while the public has --
Your time has expired.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Christine Berthet.
You may begin.
Christine, I'm asking you to unmute.
Okay, we'll move on, and we can circle back. The next person will be Glenn Belofsky.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here today. First of all, Happy Valentine's to everyone, to Chairman Silvina N. Brooks-Powers, to her legislative team, central staff, and district staff as well. Everybody's working really hard to improve safety, and this has been a terrific meeting here on Valentine's Day. And of course, our hearts go out to everybody who's lost family and friends unnecessarily. The main theme that Yudanis is talking about here is a lack of resources. That's kind of ridiculous here, you know? Got $100 billion-plus budget, spending money on all kinds of things they don't need to. But we all know, two things are standing in the way. One is small thinking, and two, politics. So the small thinking is, as many people have said, parking signs don't really mean much if they're not obeyed. And as we all know, the stipulated fine program, which I keep talking about at every meeting, is giving away at least $20 million a year to the biggest offenders, who are double-parking, obstructing view. And there's a big source of revenue that nobody's talking about, $500 million approximately, on taking the metal parking signs and turning them into little billboards, and on those little billboards, putting the parking signs in every language, and selling advertising space. I want to thank the chair and her team and central staff for this opportunity to speak, and again, wish everybody a Happy Valentine's. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
We'll now move on to Sprohl Love.
You may begin.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I can't tell if I need to turn on my video or not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name's Sprohl Love. I moved up to Harlem 25 years ago. I'm a bike commuter, and I'm now a father. And I just wanted to make the point that while we've seen other neighborhoods get a lot of what's been described here today as infrastructure, like protected bike lanes, in the 25 years I've lived up here, you know, Harlem still does not have a protected bike lane. So I was happy to hear a lot of discussion about equity when it comes to street safety. And, you know, I commute every day by bike down Adam Clayton Powell to work in Midtown, and I would say half a dozen times on that ride. And we only have an unprotected bike lane for seven blocks from 1/17th to 1/10th. I have to, I file half a dozen 3-1-1 reports about drivers parked in the lanes, bike lanes. So obviously, we need infrastructure that physically keeps drivers out. And I just want to say to the city council chairperson and to the DOT commissioner, I really appreciate you addressing this issue. We've got a good project to fit the equity and street safety requirements that you're talking about, and that's a protected bike lane on Adam Clayton Powell for the length of the boulevard. A fifth of all traffic violence in Community Board 10 happens on Adam Clayton Powell. We have a subcommittee, Transportation Subcommittee for CB 10, that has been asking for a concept --
Your time has expired.
Thank you. We asked if --
Thank you.
Could you submit the rest of your testimony in writing, please, so we can capture it?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll call on Samir Lavingia.
Starting time. Unmute. Hello. Sorry, I was just moving around tabs. Okay, let me pull up my little speech. Okay, so my name is Samir Lavingia. I'm a resident of Manhattan, but I bike everywhere, using my own bike and more frequently, city bike. I was Transportation Alternatives Manhattan activist committee Advocate of the Year, so I'm definitely not new to this game. The DOT commissioner is absolutely correct that we do not have equitable investment in our different New York City areas. However, I strongly disagree with the reasons. It isn't because council members are not vocal, it is not because Transportation Alternatives does not turn out hundreds of members to community board meetings, and I say this as a member myself. We're simply tired of going to meeting after meeting to fight for projects that should be done and dusted. I still hear people talk about the 14th Street busway and the bike lanes on 12th and 13th Street as if they're still up for discussion. We can't fight these battles, project by project, and we need policy, and we need the DOT to do the right thing. I read through the pedestrian safety action plans that was just released this morning, that was conveniently just released this morning before this meeting, and the previous edition actually had promises, ideas, pilots, and plans, such as leading pedestrian intervals, chicanes, offset crossings, and more. So there's a grand irony to me that the actual plans are all gone from the newest edition. It's been shortened to just 64 pages of just information about high-priority corridors. The real issue here is that the administration and the Department of Transportation does not have the conviction to do what is right, to bring these lifesaving projects themselves to help our communities. I was in Astoria the other day, and there was an issue with the subway, so I took the R and city biked the rest of the way. And you know what I thought? I thought to myself, "Am I going to die today?" It feels like every month I hear about another death in Astoria from a biker. And you know what I don't see? I don't see street changes. I didn't see a bike lane when I biked there, I don't see more safe infrastructure, and I don't see these lifesaving measures. The number of bills that are passed by the city council related to the DOT are astronomical, but necessary, because the DOT simply will not act of their own accord. It is hugely ironic that --
Your time has expired.
-- the mayor is pushing a city of yes agenda, but all I hear is the Department of Transportation saying no.
Thank you.
I encourage the city council to pass legislation to force the DOT to do what is right, because we all know they will not do best practices like daylighting intersections without being forced to.
Thank you.
I'm a strong proponent.
We asked that, if you could just submit the rest of your testimony in writing.
Thank you so much. We'll next turn to Laura Sewell.
You may begin.
Hi, I'm Laura Sewell, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Loa Saeta Open Streets Community Coalition, the grassroots community partner for the Avenue B Open Street. We're here today, you know, we really appreciate the testimony from the other people who have spoken and what we've heard. We thank the commissioner for our partnership thus far. We desperately need the five mile an hour speed limit, the home rule speed limit, and thankful, rightful to our elected officials who've introduced this at the state level. We need it, we need it now. We're now in our fourth, we're going into our fourth year of managing an open street and with no permanent infrastructure. We're still doing this with metal barriers and temporary speed limit signs, which are viewed mostly as just a suggestion. Most drivers take Avenue B at the speed that their skill set allows. We've definitely seen an improvement and reduction in speeds, which is great, because we've got four schools with one just below it, parks, playgrounds, people zipping in and out on micromobility vehicles. We average 175 to 200 per hour. Avenue B is just a two-lane driving street, one lane north, one lane south. So we get everything, scooters, motorcycles, wheelchairs, e-bikes, and we just really need to slow the speed down. It's critical. So that is, that's the biggest thing we're asking for today. We also need more permanent infrastructure and support from the council to push these projects forward as soon as possible. As others have said today, this is urgent, and we really appreciate this council demonstrating their support for these initiatives.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll next turn to See Leon.
You may begin.
Looks like they left.
Okay, and we'll turn back to Jeffrey Huber, if Jeffrey is there.
You may begin.
Jeffrey, do you have the mic? Are you able to talk? We can't hear you.
Okay, unfortunately, we won't be able to hear you, but you can submit your testimony in written form, and we encourage you to do that. We'll also see if Christine Berthet is there.
You may begin.
Our video shows she's not there.
Okay, likewise, Christine, if you want to submit your testimony in written form, we encourage you to do that. So with that, if we have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify and has yet to have been called, please use the Zoom hand function if you're testifying remotely, and you'll be called in the order that your hand is raised. And if you are testifying in person, please come to the dais. Seeing no one, I will now turn it over to Chair Brooks-Powers for closing remarks.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the champion advocates that came out today and turned their pain into a vehicle to fight for change, to make our streets in New York City safer. I look forward to being an ally and a partner in my role as Chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. I have full intention of moving forward with these bills today and working with the administration to make safer streets a reality where we have zero fatalities. Thank you to the staff, and thank you again to all that participated today.
Ending webinar.